Morning, everyone, and welcome to the Bradenton City Council meeting. Eight thirty a.m., Wednesday, October eleventh, here at City Hall Chambers. This time, I'll call Pastor Lucas Ashley with the Bridge Church to come forward and give us our prayer, and then we'll do a pledge, and also, I believe, we should have a moment of silence for our friends in Israel at some point.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council.
Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for another beautiful day. Father, I thank you for the mayor and the council that surround us, Lord God, the leadership for our community. Thank you for the blessing that our community receives, Lord God, through its growth and the progress that we see. Lord God, we pray this morning that everything that is discussed, Lord God, would be done so with grace, peace, and wisdom, that you would guide every decision that is made, Lord God, in a way that will glorify you and look out for the best interests of those in our community. Father, we pray for our brothers and sisters in Israel. We pray for protection, and pray for peace. We ask that you continue to guide us and bless us throughout the day. In the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. All right, lead us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
This morning, we have two proclamations. Our first one is Brandon Karnes Day for October eleventh, 2023, and I believe the mayor is going to read this himself.
All right, we get all the things where they come up? Thank you. As they're coming up, before I read the proclamation, when I was fortunate enough to be coaching high school football at Manatee High School, and when I was fortunate enough to watch my eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve-year-old son play football, I know Brandon was around there, but it was with his older brother, Breon, when they were playing. So, known this family a long time, and very proud to call them friends, and obviously, to do this today for Brandon. So, you want to come up, and we get up here?
Ah.
So, the City of Bradenton Office of the Mayor for the proclamation, and back in those days, I didn't have to put these on. I better put them on so I don't miss anything. It's a proclamation, "By the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Bradenton, I do hereby issue this proclamation honoring Brandon Karnes Day on October eleventh, 2023. Whereas Brandon is a professional American sprinter for Team USA and a gold medalist who finished first place in the men's four-by-one-hundred-meter relay at the World Athletics Championship on August twenty-sixth, 2023. Whereas Mr. Karnes is from Bradenton and attended THE Manatee High School," where he lettered all four years in track and field, and was all-American, all-area male track athlete in 2011, 12, and 13, which is a great feat. He was the district and regional champions in the 100 meters and 200 meters in 2012 and 13, and holds the school record in the 200 meters. Whereas after graduation in 2013, Mr. Karnes traded his red, white, and blue uniform for purple and gold at the University of Northern Iowa, where he graduated with a Bachelor's of Arts degree in graphic design in 2017. Whereas in May of 2022, Mr. Karnes set a new personal best 100-meter time of 10.02 in Ponce, Puerto Rico. He was bronze medalist in the 100-meter at the 2022 NACAC championship held at the Grand Bahamian Sports Complex in Freeport, Grand Bahama. He was then part of the victorious American four-by-100 relay that won the gold medal at that event. In June of 2023, Mr. Karnes equaled his personal best 100-meter time in winning the Music City Track Carnival and was selected for the World Athletics Championship in August of 2023. Whereas the community proudly joins the mayor and our city council and all of our citizens in congratulating Mr. Karnes as his many accomplishments on the track, as well as his focus to continue to give back to the community that he was born and raised in. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as mayor of the City of Bradenton, do hereby proclaim October eleventh as Brandon Karnes Day in Bradenton, and extend our sincere appreciation for his remarkable accomplishments, send best wishes for continued success in all future endeavors, and one of those is what we know we want to have you back for here someday soon, to have that gold medal from that big, that other big event next year. So, I know you did get the county proclamation yesterday from Coach Kevin in the county commission. Never thought, those years, that you'd have two coaches up here, but we're proud, and I want to say some things that probably, when I was coaching you on JV, knowing the things that were going on, I don't think you ever spoke. You were a very quiet young man and a great young man to coach and teach, and you could see great things coming from you because you worked hard and did a great job, plus have a great family network. And, you know, even though Breon is a great friend with my son, you know, it's very proud for our community to be here and have you represent us and want to be here and want to come back. And have a great wife. Obviously, you know, your daughter got your wife's cuteness, thank you. We thank you, and we appreciate it. And, you want to say anything?
Yes, sir.
Perfect.
First of all, I just want to thank my Lord and Savior. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Coach, and thank you to my family, my wife, for being here. And, yeah, I'm gonna keep going, you know, next year. Well, now, it's starting Olympics, my journey to the Olympics, and hopefully bringing back that gold medal, or any medal from the Olympics would be an honor. Any medal would be an honor, yes. And continue to come up with ideas to give back to the community and inspire the youth. And thank you, guys, and continue to support me, and, you know, here we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up here, we'll let the council get behind us.
She's had a little bit of experience being a grandma, yeah?
We'll be cheering for you. Absolutely.
And, Mr. Karnes, you've got two former Manatee High cheerleaders up here cheering for you, too.
Keep it going.
Beautiful family.
All right, thank you for that indulgence, Madam Clerk.
The next proclamation on the agenda is for Pharmacy Week, and I'll read that on behalf of the mayor. This is for October fifteenth through the twenty-first, 2023. Whereas pharmacists are experts in the successful use of today's complex medications. And whereas patients in hospitals and outpatient clinics receive better care when pharmacists are directly involved in medication management decisions. And whereas pharmacist's direct involvement in patient care helps reduce unnecessary costs and burden on the health system. And whereas pharmacists and pharmacy technicians practicing in the acute and ambulatory care settings in Bradenton contribute to the health and well-being of our citizens. And whereas ASHP and Manatee Memorial Hospital have declared October fifteenth through the twenty-first, 2023, as Pharmacy Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as mayor of the City of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim October fifteenth through the twenty-first, 2023, as Pharmacy Week in Bradenton, and urge all citizens to acknowledge the valuable services of the pharmacists and pharmacy technicians who work in inpatient, outpatient, home care, and long-term care settings, and all they do to help patients make the best use of their medicines. Sign, Jean Brown, Mayor.
Thank you. Come forward, and somebody want to speak and talk? And I know I had a fortunate, unfortunate chance to visit the hospital in April, which, you know, it's there when we need us, and, but obviously, we know that the pharmacy department is huge in that, in making sure that everything's done right when you go through a surgery, and so, we know that's why that's that important. So, you want to come up? Somebody want to give us a couple of words?
Hi, I'm James Wenger, the Director of Pharmacy at Manatee Memorial. Our focus is improving patient lives, and just in addition to the proclamation, I just want to say the key take-home point for any patients or people in our community is you've
I think it's important, as we go through and celebrate things in our community, and
got to keep an accurate record of the drugs that you take.
especially young men, and that, to come back and do what they can do, plus, you know,
That includes the medications, the herbal supplements, and illegal drugs.
to see them, to see on a stage that, you know, is unbelievable, when you look at those,
All your health care providers need to be aware of exactly what you're taking, not necessarily exactly how it's prescribed, but what you're taking, because a lot of those interactions
a possibility of being in the Olympics now and really producing, and anytime you can
with drugs can end you up in the hospital.
get Bradenton's name in the newspaper worldwide, we're happy.
So, to provide patient care to the top-notch that we do, we need to know exactly what
All right, Madam Clerk?
We do not have any presentations on the agenda this morning.
you're taking.
We appreciate it, and congratulations, and hopefully, everything goes exactly how Okay, so at this time, we're at citizen comment, which will be accepted during we hoped this week. the citizen comment portion of the meeting, on any non-agenda item, agenda item, future
Thank you.
Why don't we get up and come in front here, and then we'll all stand up behind you and get a picture? You want to give him the proclamation? agenda item, or topics of relevance to the city. Oh, he's got it, and you can just hold it open there.
Roll away, Chair.
Comments will be accepted on the public hearings at the appropriate time, and as we've said always, that, you know, any comments will be listened to by the council, and they won't be responded to until after all comments are finished, and then, you know, if there's a needed comment to that, we will either send you to a staff member or make that comment by the council or the mayor up here. So, at this time, I just have one comment by Mike Meehan. If you please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes. Good morning.
Good morning, there. I've mentioned to the council before that I do go out to the Causeway just about weekly to pick up litter, both the, uh, north and, uh, Mike Meehan, Manatee County, City of Bradenton. I do go out to the Causeway just about weekly to pick up litter out there, and this issue does relate to the Causeway, and specifically, North Palmolola Bay. I don't know if you're aware of it, but Sun Coast Water Keepers does a routine monitoring of water quality in a number of different water bodies around Manatee County, one of which is North Palmolola Bay. I'm kind of glad that they're doing that, because the Department of Health just monitors the south side of Palmolola Bay, and so, Water Keepers does provide a valuable service in letting people know what kind of water they're swimming in or thinking about swimming in. The danger zone, as shown on that chart, is seventy-five to a hundred bacteria per a hundred milliliters of water. That's the danger zone. That means, don't go in it. If you got a cut on your leg or something, absolutely do not go in that water. Don't even wade in the water. North Palmolola Bay, as measured on September twenties, twenty-fifth, not too long ago, was at three-eighteen, so it's three-hundred percent above the danger zone for anyone to go into water, and I think this is a startling piece of information. I think it needs to be pointed out to everyone on this council, because you do have the authority over that area geographically, and I'd ask you to look at this chart and do some additional study, and try to figure out how we can get the pollution levels, eliminate the pollution levels, and get that body of water down to a safe and usable number. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have no other comment cards, so at this time, we'll move on to any comments by the council, or, because I do have one, I don't know if...
Well, with regard to the water quality there, there are definitely some things that I would encourage our citizens to reach out to the Estuary Bay Program. They have vertical oyster gardens that have proven, if you put them underneath your docks, it'll help with the water quality, and not just north of the bay, I mean, south, all over. I'd like to encourage everyone, they've got that out there, and if you're part of a nonprofit, they'll work with you to do projects out there. There's also some things that, with, you know, a lot of our seawalls are getting of the age that they have to be replaced, and a lot of people, for financial, and it's easier, are going to a vinyl seawall, and that's starting to become a problem, because it doesn't allow for the oysters and things to grow on there that help cleanse the water. So, their, the Estuary Bay is working on some things that you can attach to your walls as well. So, those are some things that you can do. Obviously, there are moratoriums on putting fertilizers on your yard during, please observe those times, because a lot of the pollution comes from that flush that we get after the rains start. And the Estuary Bay just is about to embark on a program there at Palmolola Bay, where they're going to create a living seawall there at Rose Park, and do some work, that that's where the main stormwater pipe comes out, and I think that's where a lot comes into the bay. So, there's a lot going on out there, things you can do, things you can get behind. I would encourage you to go to the Estuary Bay's website and, you know, inform yourself about what things you can do and what are creating some of the problems.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, I sat on the Estuary Bay before you did, Ms. Coker, and learned a lot about that, and one of the important things to do is, as we know, we kind of go through with Executive Director Tomaco, and listen to him, so, you know, he's an expert. He works with the Water Keepers very closely, so the monitoring is being done. We do know that when that north side of the bay was built, with the roadway there, that there was supposed to be two bridges, which would have helped flush that system, because water would have came in one and had a place to go out. With a single bridge in the middle, it doesn't allow that to flow like it should. So, they're working on some projects right now, possibly to put some drainage to help the flow of that water through the DOT and that. So, a lot of these things aren't just one-fold, you know, I mean, you've got a lot of different things happening out there that you can't blame one entity for it. It's got to be looked at a lot. It's the homeowners. It's the way the system was set up years ago. It was the way that, you know, we have more traffic out there because of people swimming, and obviously, the horses come up, the jet skis come up, the boaters come up. So, we are looking at every option, but to pick on one wasn't the right thing to do at the time. So, it is being monitored. Mr. Tomasco is very engaged in that, and we're very proud that we are Palmolola Bay in the Sarasota Bay, is the healthiest bay overall, but can we do better? Yes, so we are working towards that, and it's very important. So, thank you for those comments, and it is something that we keep it, and thank you for always going out there and be our Mike Meehan, keep Manatee beautiful, so, keep Palmolola Bay beautiful. So, thank you for that. All right, moving on, consent agenda, Ms. Madam Clerk?
Staff is requesting approval of items A through J.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comment?
Mayor, I've had the opportunity to meet with each and every counselor over the last couple of days, answer any questions, get feedback and concerns, as well as provide information to some of the concerns of counselors or questions from counselors. I feel satisfied that these are appropriately placed on consent agenda, and that they have now tendered items A through J for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
With the Main Street Live, I hope at some point, we'll get to hear from them about their plans. I know this has gone through the review, yeah, in the future, not now, but I just wanted to bring that up.
No, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second, and heard no further discussion. We'll start the vote in Ward Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
And one.
Yes.
Carries five to zero. Yes, I would, just to that, Ms. Coker, I'd probably be, with the way the group's coming in kind of quick, trying to get the first one done, they've got five, they've actually now have some major sponsors coming in, which is going to be, you know, very nice to do it, and as we look towards the future, less money from the city, more money from the sponsors, and then possibly a city recoup when their sponsorship is all where it should be. But that would be a great thing to have them come in and give us a little presentation, because they want to do five this year, and this is, they want to get the first one going, and then they'll come in and get everything done with the Events Planning Committee at one time.
Great.
But, perfect. All right, Madam Clerk?
At this time, I'll administer the oath. Anyone wishing to address City Council during the following public hearings will please stand and raise their right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations which you are about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven A is Resolution twenty-three-seventy-six, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bradenton granting special use permit number SU.23.3297 to operate a drive-through restaurant facility in the T4O General Urban Open zoning district for property located at 109, 116, and 118, 10th Avenue East. The parcel ID numbers are 4620200008, 462200000, and 4621900002, Bradenton, Florida. And more particularly described herein, making findings of fact and conclusions of law, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
All right, thank you. Good morning, counsel. I'm Jamie Schindelwalt, representing Planning and Community Development Staff, and I have been sworn, I'll present the staff report for this case, and then we do have applicant representatives here as well to answer any questions you may have. So, as stated, this is a special use consideration for a drive-through in the T4O transect zoning This aerial shows you the location of the subject parcels. That's off of 10th Avenue East and just off of First Street East. If it helps to orient, there is a Domino's Pizza right there, Direct Insurance, and Tropical Smoothie Cafe. The future land use of urban commercial corridor does explicitly list drive-through restaurants as a planned use in that future land use category. And then, the T4O transect lists drive-throughs as a special use. So, as usual, today's case is not the final approval of a site plan. The request is simply for the use itself, but you are empowered to place conditions on the ultimate development if you do approve the special use. So, I'm going to show the conceptual site plan, oh, first, I'm going to show pictures, sorry, of the site. So, there's the northern lot to the left, and then the southern lots there on the right. And here is the conceptual site plan. I tried to sort of point out where each of these site plans would apply, so that northern lot you see on the left is meant to be overflow parking, or mostly employee parking is the idea there. The spaces are oriented towards the existing restaurant and away from the existing single-family residence that is just to the east. And then, the southern lot is where the drive-through restaurant is proposed. I've outlined it there in red, if you can see, and I've provided a red arrow to show a pedestrian crossing that's proposed from that existing retail drive-through to the west, and this proposed drive-through. So, if someone were to park, it's all under the same ownership, if someone were to park near that Direct Insurance building, they have a pedestrian crossing over to this facility. So, our general special use standards do have these conditions within them regarding a landscape separation strip, and that says that permanent screening such as walls, et cetera, may be required to protect surrounding properties from this use. This is in the Form Based Code area, and this is from the land use regulations, and so, it's a little difficult to marry the two sometimes. Here in the Form Based Code, we encourage buildings to be situated in a way that adds bulk to the street, and this proposed site plan has done that. They have the building oriented up towards 10th. So, with that frontage situated that way, and the need for ingress and egress, they aren't able to give that full ten feet of separation. So, in lieu of that, staff recommends placing some landscaping conditions on the project, which are explained further. This is not the first time this has happened, even since I've been here in the Form Based Code area, where the buffer's been a little smaller in the form, in these sorts of projects, but there can still be some adequate landscaping, fencing, et cetera, to separate these uses. This is the full list of considerations when looking at a special use request, and so, as shown on the conceptual plan, these properties can provide the required elements generally, including parking, stacking, and access. This use is not incompatible with the surrounding uses on the corridor, which already has some drive-throughs, et cetera. Staff does have some recommendations that you may want to consider for stipulations, and Planning Commission recommended those as well. This is a specific criteria that has to be applied to drive-throughs. Specifically, they need to have nine feet per lane and accommodate five vehicles for stacking, and they have shown on the conceptual site plan that they can do this. These are some police recommendations from our Development Review Committee meeting held on June sixth. They recommended a marked crosswalk, moving the stop bar on the property to the west back a bit for pedestrian safety, and then, just clear signage to make it obvious for wayfinding into this new facility. So, staff recommends approval with these stipulations, as shown. Planning Commission recommended the same. Some of these are standard, you know, have to do the site improvement plan, we will, I think that's in there, we will, you know, review the final plans to our Form Based Code, et cetera, administratively, but the ones that are unique to this are that second one, an opaque fence and landscaping will be provided between the drive-through restaurant and the parcel to the east. The third one, the parking spaces on the northern parcel will be oriented away from the single-family home to the east, which is shown, and then, the pedestrian safety features will be added and approved with that site improvement plan. So, if you all have any questions, happy to take those, and again, applicant representation is here as well.
Any questions?
Hi.
Of Jamie? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I, so, you're basically treating them as one parcel as far as Form Based Code, and then, correct, because you don't have a structure on the other one, is that, I mean, is that okay?
It is okay. A parking lot's allowed.
Okay.
And so, that's, they can do a parking lot in that, in that northern parcel, and then, there's no structure, so, yeah, you can't apply architectural standards, obviously, and so, then, the southern one is the one where the Form Based Code really comes into play with the siding of the building.
And so, what happens if they, if that separate parcel gets sold off? Does it mean you have to close the business that's there, or how does that get treated in the future?
We could, I believe, and I'm going to look back, require like a, like a cross-access agreement or something to tie them together.
A unity of title.
A unity of title.
Okay.
Required parking, so it can't be...
It can't be ever split off and then just...
Right. It's, it would be a unity of title to...
that second one, an opaque fence and landscaping will be provided between the drive-through restaurant and the parcel to the east. The third one, the parking spaces on the northern parcel will be oriented away from the single-family home to the east, which is shown. And then the pedestrian safety features will be added and approved with that site improvement plan. So, if you'll have any questions, happy to take those. And again, applicant representation is here as well.
Any questions?
Hi.
Of Jamie? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I, so, you're basically treating them as one parcel as far as Form-Based Code, and then, correct, because you don't have a structure on the other one? Is that, I mean, is that okay?
It is okay. Parking lot's allowed.
Okay.
And so, that's, they can do a parking lot in that, in that northern parcel. And then, there's no structure, so, yeah, you can't apply architectural standards, obviously. And so, then, the southern one is the one where the Form-Based Code really comes into play with the siding of the building.
And so, what happens if they, if that separate parcel gets sold off? Does it mean you have to close the business that's there, or how does that get treated in the future?
We could, I believe, and I'm going to look back, require like a, like a cross-access agreement or something to tie them together.
A unity of title.
A unity of title.
Okay.
Required parking, so it can't be...
It can't be ever split off and then just...
Right. It's, it would be a unity of title to join the two together because the parking, the required parking is located in another parcel.
Okay.
And again, I think the majority of the business is drive-through.
That, that is the intention, yes. And the applicant has said that it's likely that that additional parking up there would be for primarily employees. But then they can also use the immediate parking to the west, which would be more convenient, likely, especially for customers.
I've just seen recently, and it actually was in the county, things that I know were done when the initial site plan was done, there was a change in ownership on and out parcel, and things got changed, and I was, you know, curious. So, that's what brought that up.
In perpetuity, that it'll stay the same?
Well, because it was, I'm sure, because of fire and access and a lot of that, and then, just kind of, doesn't have to go through another approval, I guess. I don't know.
I have some concerns, simply because of the size of this, and how it can be a comfortable fit for not only the business owner, but also the residents, and a safety issue. Because what kind of restaurant is this going to be? Or what kind, what is this, a drive-through?
The, the applicant can reveal that if they'd like, but they haven't let us know.
And, okay.
All right, so we can maybe have the applicant come up and give a presentation?
I think Lisa had been...
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have one for staff?
Just one real quick, and it is, for the parking, the cars are going to be directed away from the, from the existing residential. Is there any benefit to asking, as a stipulation, to have some kind of landscaping or a small buffer, like a hedge of sorts or anything? Or do you not feel like that is something that's going to be super beneficial to the, or too egregious?
I, you can certainly ask for it. I mean, people do, do back-end parking, you know? So, there is a chance that headlights would still infiltrate that, that parcel next door.
Just a thought.
Anything else before we get the applicant? Okay. Thank you, Jamie.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. For the record, my name is Robert Schmidt with Land Planning Associates in Manatee County. I have with me my client, Mr. Russ Hilton. The ownership of all three parcels is the same, and Ms. Cochrane, to your point, we would have no objection to that unity in title. This parcel was always part of the future development of the, of the joint parcels that are owned. In other words, the existing owner also owns Insurance Direct and Tropical Smoothie. During COVID, this was supposed to go forward, and it did not because of that circumstance. But this is essentially a build-out of the project that we always foresaw. In terms of the type of restaurant, it will be a breakfast type of restaurant. So, there won't be any evening, or very minimal evening type of traffic, and we think it's a good fit for what's been developed there already, and we would like to go ahead and complete the project as proposed, but I'll be happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Anything, Ms. Cochrane?
Well, I actually kind of have a comment about the existing business Tropical Cafe. There's a safety issue, I feel, when you're exiting out of the restaurant, when you're trying to go west or east on the, what street is that?
10th.
10th?
Yeah.
It's, it's pretty scary sometimes, traffic that's turning quickly off of First Street, which is a very busy highway. And also, your view, your sight, as you're trying to see if there's anything coming heading west, it's a pretty unsafe...
Understood. This driveway is a little bit further east, but we, we, we get that. It's, it's one of those circumstances where the property boundaries are where they are, and there's not a whole lot we can do about that. If, if some traffic learns to turn right on 10th and go out, and maybe if they're headed east to go left, and then out to 9th or something like that, it's, it's, it's human nature, but I, I do understand your concern. And, and there's really very little we can do to mitigate that. But, we'll, if there's signage that's necessary to be put in, or there's a stipulation that you'd like to see, we'd be happy to entertain that.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Cochrane.
Will the, will the crosswalk have any, anything else other than the street markings, or will there be any kind of like flashing light, or?
As far as I know, just the crosswalk would just be striped. If there's a sign that needs to be put up for that, then we'd be happy to do that, too. The intent of that parking lot, as Jamie mentioned, is for employees. It's, it's not meant for customers. If there is overflow, then they, I guess they could park there, but that's not how it will be identified, per se. But, we will, we discussed that in the pre-application meeting, in the DRC meeting, and we have no objection to what the Police Department recommended in terms of a crosswalk.
I was thinking if it's a breakfast place, then there, your employees are going to be parking there in the dark, presumably, and potentially, you know, if they have to be there super early.
Understood.
And then crossing.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing, and we'll see if questions come back. All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments, questions, motion?
Can we just move to approve with the stipulation suggested by Sash and the additional stipulation that, I'm spacing out on what the additional one that we just mentioned, that we wanted to add. Well, I would, I, I think that we should add more to the crosswalk, like the light.
Opague fence on the parking lots.
And then the buffer on the parking lot. But there was one more that, that we just mentioned.
The crosswalk possibly being a little bit more articulated.
Miss Cochrane made a suggestion, oh, the unity of title.
Oh, yeah. All right.
Do we need to include that as a stipulation, as far as the motion?
Three additional stipulations, I think?
I mean, I, I, I thought, it sounded like she was already okay with, she was already doing that, but maybe not.
Do we need to read that into the record?
Yeah.
Because I don't know, there's, we're all six, Merkle.
Jamie, if you don't mind reading them into the record, that way there's no confusion and then...
Well, it looks like they've already got opaque fencing and landscaping for both drive-through restaurant and the parcel to the east.
No, that's between the restaurant and the parcel that's to the east of the restaurant. Yeah. So, I can read these, and then...
We can add the...
You'll add, okay. It's like, I didn't take notes. I did, but, all right. So, the, the recommendation is to add the following stipulations. The site plan and elevation shall be reviewed through the Form-Based Code review process and shall be approved with adjustments as determined by the PCD Director. An opaque fence and landscaping will be provided between the drive-through restaurant and the parcel to the east. The parking spaces on the northern parcel will be oriented away from the single-family home to the east. Pedestrian safety features will be added and approved with a site improvement permit. Modifications to the site plan during the site improvement permitting phase shall be reviewed for compliance with the Florida Fire and Building Codes and with City of Bradenton Form-Based Code and Land Use Regulations as applicable. And modifications to the site plan during the site improvement permitting phase shall reflect safe and logical traffic, circulation, and pedestrian access.
Okay, and then the motion would be to approve with those stipulations, plus...
Plus, I don't know how we would say to stipulate that there's going, that we require...
Unity of title.
And...
Yeah, a unity of title will be recorded, joining the two properties, joining the parking lot to the properties across the street.
Okay. And then, and in addition...
Do you want to do, just mirror the language of an opaque fence and landscaping?
Yes.
Under bullet, under bullet point three.
Right, and, and with the additional stipulation that either opaque fencing or landscaping will be provided between the parking lot, the northern parcel parking lot, and the residential parcel to the east of the parking lot.
Okay.
Think we get there?
Yep. All right, so we have a motion with the original stipulations and the two added?
I added the two because upon reading them, I, I want to give you flexibility with the pedestrian safety, and, you know, we address, I feel like we address it, and then you can, in your site plan, I think you can probably address as much safety as we could possibly squeeze into it.
Mr. Rudisell?
Yeah, I just want to check with the applicant to make sure they're okay. I, I know they, they said they were okay with the one stipulation. I want to make sure they're okay with the landscaping. Just come on up, Bob, and put it on the record for us.
So, are you, Robert, are you all for the stipulations?
Yes, Mayor, we're in agreement, and I'm sorry, Scott, I just thought the thumbs up was, or the okay signal was going to work. But thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have a motion with the stipulations and the two additional stipulations that's been agreed upon by the applicant. So, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Moore, and a second by Ms. Coachman, and we've had discussion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Carries unanimously. Thank you, and thank you for your time. Sure. All right, moving forward, Madam Clerk?
The next item on the agenda is 7B, Resolution 2377, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bradenton granting special use permit SU.23.3543 to expand a light industrial use located at 1410, 8th Avenue East, and 1415, 9th Avenue East, Bradenton, Florida. The parcel IDs are 3247-40059, 3247-200003, and 3247-000007, in the T-40 zoning district, and more particularly described herein, making findings of fact and conclusions of law, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Good morning.
Good morning. Greg DeLong, representing the Planning and Community Development Department, and I have been sworn in. And thank you for the title reading of the project in hand. This is for General Propeller. They are looking at removing an existing building on the property and building a new 20,000-square-foot new building with off-street parking. And here's just some general case information with the applicant acreage of the land. As you can see, the current zoning is T-40, so this is, again, in our Form-Based Code area. It has a future land use zoning classification of UCC, which is urban commercial corridor. Here is just a quick location map showing the existing parcels at hand for General Propeller. Here is the zoning map. As you can see, it's T-40. To the north is T-4R, and to the east and west and south are also T-40. Future land use is UCC, which is our urban commercial corridor. To the north is RESMed, which is a medium-density residential. And as mentioned before, the applicant is requesting to construct a new 20,000-square-foot building and new off-street parking lot with 24 spaces. The subject property is located, as I mentioned, in the Form-Based Code area. Our Form-Based Code does list light manufacturing as, or light industrial as special use, therefore, it has to go in front of Planning Commission and City Council for final approval. As I mentioned earlier, this is the property for General Propeller, who's been in business since 1945, and I mentioned earlier that this is under the UCC, urban commercial corridor, future land use designation, and that designation does not prohibit this type of use on the property. Here is, it's a lot going on here, so I do apologize, but here is a site plan of what they are planning on doing. The new building, I should have probably outlined it like Ms. Schindelwulf did. This is where the new 20,000-square-foot building will go. The new parking will be to the south of it, so they will be removing buildings here on the south side. This isn't our Form-Based Code. They did make a submittal for a Form-Based Code adjustment already for the building, since our code does not permit metal buildings, so we will be going through that review process thereafter, this meeting, should the approval go forward. Here are just some current conditions of the property. That's the existing building that will be removed. You see, there's a lot of gravel, so what they're proposing to do is definitely an enhancement to the property. Here's just some other general photos of the General Propeller properties, large block. As mentioned before, there are some special use standards that need to be reviewed. One requires, as Ms. Schindelwulf mentioned earlier, there's the 10-foot buffer. They are meeting that. We will work with them. When they did their submittal for their Form-Based Code, they did not submit a landscape plan. We will review all that as the process goes forward. Right now, we're just here focusing on the special use and for the expansion of the building, but we will work with them on future adjustments that may need to come forward. Again, as mentioned in the previous case you saw earlier, under 3.3.2.5, there are quite a few general criteria that need to be met, including consistency with our comp plan, which is one of the key items that appears to be met. So, staff does recommend approval of this, Special Case Use 23.3543, with the following stipulations. As mentioned in the previous case, this is about SIP. A lot of these are just typical processes. It's basically a reminder what you need to do, so we don't lose track during our review processes of what their next steps are. So, Planning Commission did meet with them, or meet on September 20th. They did recommend approval with the above-listed stipulations, and they did vote 6-0 for the approval recommendation. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions? I think that, you know, this obviously has come for us before, and I'm glad that General Propeller was willing to, to work hard to stay in our community after being a decades-long in business in the community. I'm, I'm happy that we were able to figure something out, and they were able to come back and, and get this, so I hope...
And I want to thank our previous staff. We have the Planning Department. That staff worked really hard with General Propeller to get them to this point, including our director, Ms. Singer.
No, great. So, all right, and you...
And this is truly an enhancement for the year.
Yeah, because we don't ever want to lose a 60, 70-year business in town that's, that's been here and productive in our town, so, does the applicant...
They do have representation here today.
Okay. So, does the applicant have anything to say before we go to a public hearing? Good morning. Just please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Clay Gilman, McFarlane Ferguson McMullin, 625 Court Street, Corridor, Florida, here on behalf of General Propeller. We also have Representative General Propeller here, as well as Engineering and Design Team, but we just want to say thank you to the Planning Department for working with us, and, you know, we, we agree this is an enhancement of the property, and looking forward to working with the City of Bradenton in the future.
Thank you. Any questions?
And, yeah, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask myself or the Engineering Team.
All right. Hearing none, we'll move on. All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Approval of Resolution 23-77 with stipulations.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
And three.
Yes.
Approved, five to zero. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Item 7C is Resolution 2378, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bradenton granting special use permit number SU.23.3623 for a public facility use to include a new telecommunication tower and shelter at property located at 421, 17th Avenue West. Parcel ID numbers are 449-38-00159, Bradenton, Florida, as more particularly described herein, making findings of fact and conclusions of law, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Morning.
Great. Good morning. Greg DeLong, again, representing the Planning and Community Development Department, and I have been sworn in. Here's just a quick case information summary of what, who is the applicant and the parcel we're talking about in general. The applicant is John Hamill. He's an agent for Manatee County Radio Division Manager. This parcel has multiple addresses on it. The parcel ID, according to the property appraiser, has an assigned address of 421. Their application did say 1801 5th Street, because that is the actual location of where the tower will be located, but it is all on one parcel. The acreage is a little over five acres. It is currently zoned R2, which is medium-density residential for one and two families. The future land use is RESMed, and the property currently has various county agencies on it, and as mentioned, they are looking at installing a 250-foot telecommunication tower with accessory equipment. Just a little quick summary of this, we did work with them, the county that is, on this pri... We did work with them, the county that is, on this project. They were coming forward with this request. The current zoning does not technically allow telecommunications towers, per se. But we do have a clause in our code that talks about public facilities. So we went down that avenue with it to allow them, because of the urgency of this tower and the importance of this tower, which they will share in their presentation. We have been encouraging the county to move forward with a comprehensive plan amendment and also rezoning of this property, because it's zoned right now for future land use as residential. Why? We don't really understand how it got that classification. So we are encouraging them for their future use of this property. If they plan on staying there forever, to really consider doing some amendments to their future land use and the rezoning of the property. So here's a current location map of the parcel. As you can see, it is quite large. And the city has a large facility over here to the east of it. The current zoning map, as you can see right here, is R2, which is residential. And to the little parcel over here, which was Children's Safe Place, if you remember that one recently, they are zoned UCC. To the east is UCC. And then to the north and west, you have T4O. And then to the south, you also have R2, which there is an apartment complex down there. Here is the future land use of this property. As you can see, it has a RESMed, future land use classification on it. To the west, you have Urban Village. To the east, you have Urban Commercial Corridor. To the south, RESMed. And also to the north, you have RESMed. And our recommendation is for them to consider the UCC if they do a future land use, just to be consistent with everything adjacent to it. As mentioned, they are proposing to install a new 250-foot-tall communications tower with associated equipment. As I mentioned earlier in this presentation, we are classifying this as a public facility. And here's the definition of a public facility, which classifies... Which puts it under the special use classification in the current zoning R2 designation on the property. The proposed tower is to replace an existing tower located adjacent to the government administration complex downtown. It's actually just to the south of their park... Or to the north of their parking garage. Here is a site plan of the... Where they're looking at putting it. Here is their radio communication building. So they're looking at putting it to the south of it. Here is just an elevation of what that tower will look like. Here's just some current conditions of the current area and surrounding properties. Currently does kind of have an industrial feel to it over there. This photo here, the telecommunications tower... Just imagine the palm tree being a telecommunications tower, because it's pretty much behind the palm tree. But it'll be 250 feet up in height. So it's going to be in that general location there. And here is the Radio Division Headquarters. And here's just looking to the west from the Radio Division Headquarters.
But they're mostly businesses.
Yeah, pretty much businesses. As mentioned in the previous case, there are some special standards that need to be met, including setbacks and things like that. In landscaping buffers, they appear to be meeting all of those. And here are the general criteria, again, for special uses that you've seen in the previous two cases today, under 3.3.2.5. And it does appear that they are meeting them. There is additional criteria in our land use regulations for telecommunications towers, and they fall under Section 4.3.10. And they did submit the information that is required under this for visual impact, engineering study, and things like that. So that all should be in your packet. And in engineering certification, there's some specific standards that we have in our code. And based on everything, staff does recommend approval as submitted for case SU.23.3623. Planning Commission heard this case on September 20th and also recommended approval with no stipulations by a vote of six to zero. Any questions for me?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Has staff considered that there's residential just a stone throw away?
We have.
And so this still meets regulations to be...
We put it under the public facility, yeah. Our code does not have setback requirements for telecommunications towers, which we probably need to be getting in our code, unfortunately. They can talk a little bit more about how this tower is constructed and the fall zone. It did come up at Planning Commission. So they can probably do a better explanation than me on it.
And I get it. It is an industrial feel. That's what's there. That doesn't mean it has to...
One of the important factors is obviously public safety.
Yes.
This isn't a... One of those companies just to put up a cell tower.
Right, right.
This is a public safety tower.
I am...
And it's a... With the facilities that are around it, it's not like that property will become more valuable with the juvenile justice system and the other things. And the fall was a very important thing, which we can let them talk about. That, you know, it falls straight down, not out. But so we can have the applicant come up?
Sure. Yeah, I'm thinking public safety all around. The communications part, that it's going to be an asset, but also...
Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Counsel. My name is John Hamill, and I'm the Radio Division Manager for Manatee County Government. And this tower... We typically... We have 10 towers in Manatee County... In Manatee County that actually provide public safety communications. And this tower actually is replacing the tower, like Greg said, next to the parking garage. When we picked the location, we had lots of criteria. It had to actually be within one mile of the current one, so we did not mess up the contours of the coverage. This tower meets that requirement. It's actually had to be south. It's .9 miles away from the current tower. As far as the compound is going to be in a compound, it's actually almost 80 feet by 80 feet. And the tower, the design of this 250-foot tower, it actually will fall within a 50-foot radius. It's actually self-collapsing, the way they do the structure of the tower and the structure of the seal... The steel. So it'll actually drop straight down. And it will not hit any of the surrounding areas and won't hit our building, which is going to be good. But it'll actually be... The compound will be a fenced compound with razor wire on the top to protect it. It will drop. The tower will drop in there. There's actually going to be a building in there. And it's also going to have a generator inside that compound. And this particular tower provides all... It will replace the tower that's currently providing all of the safety communications for City of Bradenton, fire and police, my friend the chief back there, and also provide communications up into Palmetto and west out to Manatee Avenue for MSO and EMS. So it's a very crucial part. The tower has to be on the air. And that's why this tower has to be built, because when they're working on the parking garage, we have to put this one on the air first before we can take the other tower and take it off the air. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was just going to say, one of the things I like, you know, I mean, location, we had to find something.
We had to... We worked a lot to find it.
We looked a lot around the city to try to find where that perfect location was. But I like that it's not going to be in the heart of our urban core now that we're trying to redevelop.
Right.
You know, because that's not... You know, not that it's ugly, but it's...
It is a tower.
It's crucial.
It's a tower.
It is a tower.
Water treatment plant, too, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's right by the water.
It's right next to the water treatment plant.
The right area.
Yeah.
And that was even at first, I think, when I heard that it might have been outside the zone at one point. We were worried because of the mile radius.
Right.
But I think that that was all...
Now, this thing has been designed. It's going to... If it does come down now... Just to let you all know, it's rated CAT 5. The building and the generator, the whole complex will be rated CAT 5. As far as it actually coming down, we actually went through Irma with an exact same similar tower in South Sarasota County, which had sustained 150 mile-hour winds on the tower, and it didn't even phase it. So it's a very structurally sound tower.
Good. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
For the public hearing. All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
You want to do it?
Yeah. Resolution 2378.
Move to approve Resolution 2378 as submitted.
Second.
All right. Motion by Councilman Kramer, a second by Councilwoman Barnaby. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
And four.
Yes.
Carries five to zero. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Item 7D is Ordinance 4022. This is second reading and public hearing. An ordinance of the City of Bradenton, Florida, amending Chapter 42, Article 1, 2, and 3 relating to fire prevention and protection... Excuse me. Revising Chapter 42, Article 1, 2, and 3 to remove duplicate language from the Florida Fire Prevention Code and to clean up language and code numbers to allow easier reading and understanding of Chapter 42, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Who do we have to speak to this? Anything? Chief?
I'll come up and just say a few words about it. It's exactly what it states. It's just cleaning up old language. You'll see this come back before even three years. It's a requirement by the state fire marshal. What this does is take what is required in the city, posts it up at their... At the state level on their site. They review it for approval as well. And then anybody looking to come to the city can access our requirements through the state site. So no matter what, going forward, you'll see this back in three years. And it's exactly what it is. You see a lot of strike-throughs and reserved areas that were recommended by the city attorney that we leave in place for updates and requirements from them, that we have room to amend it next time it comes before you. But you see in there that it covers pretty much everything we do and all the requirements here in the city. There are no new fees or anything associated. It's just cleaning up what's currently there.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Perry?
Mayor, if I could just be heard. This is a... This is a subject to some new legislation that was mandated by Florida Legislature regarding necessity for business impact statement. And the back of the package is that business impact statement. It really requires notice to the public and the opportunity for the public to respond with any concerns about delirious business impact implications and the likes. I just wanted to point that out. This is one of the first times we've seen that at a pencil.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I did have one. When we were looking at it yesterday, there was a reference... Hold on a sec. Section 42-42. And they were talking about the fees in there, and it referenced a specific resolution. And so when we looked at that, we said, you know, we ought to probably just strike that specific reference. And we just added language to say that the fees will be established by resolution of the City Council. That way, we don't have to come back with a new ordinance every time. I mean, the whole point of doing it by resolution is that we don't have to amend the ordinance. So we did recommend that one last-minute change. But that's all.
Okay.
And I believe Tamara emailed that updated version out to the council.
Is that included in the proposed ordinance currently? Or will that have to be amended to include that?
It would be amended. It's in the version that Tamara emailed out this morning.
It was also pushed to your iPads, in your app.
Okay. So the motion would be to approve as amended?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, so we have to go to public hearing first. So thank you, Chief. All right, we'll open the public hearing. Ordinance 4022. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I motion to approve Ordinance 4022 with the information that has been presented to us today, where it will state that fees will be established by resolution in the City of Bradenton.
Within Section 42.42.
Yep. Okay.
Second.
Second, all right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
And five.
Yes.
Carries five to zero. Madam Clerk.
Item 7E is the first reading of Ordinance 4017, an ordinance of the City of Bradenton, Florida, amending the Bradenton Form-Based Code to create Article 1, Section 1.12, Building Height Incentives, to provide a time-limited height incentive in the T5 and T6 zoning districts, providing for codification, providing for the repeal of ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. And the second reading and public hearing is scheduled for November 1st.
Okay. All right, so that'll be the second reading, public hearing on November 1st.
If I may?
Yes, ma'am.
I think it would be beneficial for staff to present today.
Do... Are you prepared?
Good morning. Robin Singer, Planning Community Development Director. Apologize, I didn't log the presentation. So this is the... Excuse me a second here. Want to make sure I get the right one? Okay. So this is the ordinance that we previously discussed on, I believe, a couple of occasions, where we are providing for incentives of building height for market-rate residential units in the downtown, including primarily limitations on height in both the T5 and T6 zoning districts. So the area in question that we have indicated within the ordinance is the area in red. A lot of this area is... Both T5 and T6 is primarily... We're talking about the area west of First Street, or 301. We are excluding some of the area to the south here because it's primarily low-scale residential. So we're targeting areas where we think a higher-level redevelopment would be envisioned and accepted. Some of the differences between the T5 and T6 district, they're fairly minimal. The main difference is in building height. And as we discussed before, this depicts what the difference is in the building height. You can get a maximum of 12 stories currently in the T5 districts and maximum of 20 stories in the T6 district. And so it would be a matter of allowing the T6 height And so, it would be a matter of allowing the T-six height in the T-five district with city council approval. Furthermore, some of the height is dependent on workforce housing, the provision of either workforce housing or payment into the fund. Nobody has paid, yet paid into the fund. We feel like there are a number of incentives, particularly recently approved under Senate Bill one-oh-two at the state level, that compels us to allow the highest height for any workforce housing anywhere in the city, in a commercial or industrial district. So, we feel like there's a great number of incentives for workforce and affordable housing already that's provided by the state and built into our code in terms of density incentives. So, we don't feel that this necessarily, you know, we're talking about some market-rate units, that to provide this incentive to happen more quickly, that we don't necessarily need that workforce housing incentive built into as inclusionary zoning in our T-six and T-five districts. So, part of that is going to be waiving that requirement. And the other thing is, is that in the T-six district, if you want to apply for variances to height, you have to meet all of those criteria. You have to have exhausted all of the possibilities with LEED certification, workforce housing, and public art. So, we're also saying that you don't have to meet that workforce in order to come forward for a variance requirement, or variance request within the T-six district. So, also, we probably see this most likely being used within the future land use area that is the urban core, and that's the greener area as opposed to the teal area. And that is because in this area, you can get up to two-hundred dwelling units per acre as opposed to seventy if you included affordable housing, or, I believe, it's sixty or fifty for market rate. But you could get up to two-hundred units per acre just as market-rate housing within this area that's in green. And that's, again, requires city council approval. It would continue to require that approval, but because of the number, the amount of density that you get, you're probably more likely going to benefit from a height incentive as well. And we talked a little bit before that there are other stipulations and requirements in the code that dictate and limit the volume of the structure, and we're not proposing that you change that at all. So, the floor area ratio of twelve that's allowed in the downtown area, they're still going to have to meet that. So, they are going to have to cut out, carve out some of the property, some of the volume of the structure in order to get to the higher heights that they may want to encourage. So, at twelve stories floor area ratio, to get to twenty stories, you're definitely going to have to carve out some, some property. So, you're not looking at a solid, dense, full-block structure that is twenty stories And then, we had previously given some examples. I won't go through those again. There's other requirements in the code that they still have to abide by, that, again, talk about setbacks and talk about how they, these buildings address the street, and that there's some give and take on the facade elevation to take advantage of that. And then, our recommendation ultimately, I'm going to go back through this. So, we have that, first of all, T-five and T-six properties in the described area may be granted the workforce housing height bonus on Table four-point-four without providing workforce housing or payment into the workforce housing trust fund. Number two, T-six zone properties in the described area may be granted additional height beyond the twenty-story maximum without providing workforce housing or payment into the workforce housing trust fund as required under one-point-ten, point-two, point-dee, point-two. T-five properties in the described area may be granted the same building height bonuses as allowed in the T-six under Table four-point-four, subject to the same restrictions regarding public art and LEED certification, and the same building configuration requirements in Table four-point-five, as provided in one-point-twelve, point-two, point-A. T-five properties may be granted the workforce housing density bonus without providing workforce housing or payment into the workforce housing trust fund. So, this, basically, what this is saying, T-five gets what T-six has. And again, this is all with city council approval. This isn't an administrative approval. In both the T-five and T-six zones in the described area, garage levels above the ground floor will not be counted as stories, provided that not more than twenty-five percent of the floor area of those levels are dedicated to non-vehicular uses, and that at least sixty percent of the ground floor area is dedicated to usable retail or office space. So, in other words, if you look back on some of the examples we had given in Sarasota and St. Pete, they had some garage levels, but they had retail or some usable space on the ground floor. And I think at the pedestrian level, that's really important, that you're not walking past a garage, that you're keeping some retail or office space, or even it could be, you know, club facilities for the building above. So, with that, again, we believe there's a number of provisions in the code that are going to safeguard us from getting, you know, a structure that is overbearing on the environment, you know, with the floor area ratio. This is a time-limited approval. It is only in place for five years, that they have to come to city council to get approval, and then another five years to break ground, and we've been pretty specific on what we feel the requirements are for that. They do have to come to city council for approval, and there is criteria already specified in the code, similar to other adjustments that you would be required to comply with. So, we feel like there's enough safeguards in there, and also the possibility that at the end of the five years, or end of the ten years, you may wish to extend it, you may wish to modify it. And we also put a provision in there that you could, at some point, terminate it if you wanted to, if it's just not going the right way, and it's, it's creating contention or issues in the community, as long as we're honoring any vested rights for prior approvals, that you can change or modify this provision in the code. And so, with that, Planning Commission voted to recommend approval, and staff is recommending approval.
Yeah, and the Planning Commission was six to zero, and they had a lot of questions, which I was impressed with, because some of them wanted to know why we were putting a time limit on it. And, you know, I felt the time limit was important because we weren't then handcuffing future councils at that time. And plus, it also does, if development's going to happen, you know, we don't want somebody to buy a property and then wait and see for years and years and years, and it still sits derelict. So, I thought that was important. Plus, we do know, as, and I said this last night at one of our events for, for our National Night Out with our police department, that as downtown thrives, the whole city thrives. So, it's going to make an opportunity that if some of these developments do come in, that we're going to be able to then utilize some of, all of that in our ad valorem, because these are non-government properties that are going to add to the, the ad valorem, and with, you know, to really be able to start to utilize our downtown in the positive way. We talked about an event earlier, and I didn't mention that they were here. So, the group here, they left. I was hoping they'd stay, but, but no. So, I just think this is the right direction, but it's also given opportunity for developers to have a chance to, to get this going. And that's important, because we know how somebody buys something and sits on it for years and years and years until it develops. So, any other comments or questions?
Of course it does, I'm right down.
This is just a, obviously, the first reading, and then we'll have more opportunity. Ms. Coker?
Well, I don't, I would go first. Actually, mine goes towards that LEED certification. Does it have to be LEED-certified? I mean, if you fulfill, I mean, we all know what, you know, there are certain ways, certain ways to get, fulfill those requirements, but sometimes, and I don't know, because I haven't looked into it in a long time, but having to use LEED-certified architects or contractors and all that sometimes can really add to the expense, whereas, you know, you can still accomplish the same thing you want to do. Is that still the case? And if so, can you still fulfill what we want to accomplish, you know, low-carbon footprint, using certain materials, the floor ratio, all that, without being LEED-certified?
Yeah. We're going right now with what the code, or the Form-Based Code already has in place, and it does speak to LEED certification. I think we have talked at the Planning Commission about other green building certifications that would accommodate that. We haven't heard that it's a real issue, though, that it's a real problem. There is a lot of architects that are LEED-certified, or certainly can employ those practices and work with somebody who is LEED-certified to bring them in to do that. I haven't gotten a lot of feedback on that, per se, but we haven't had a lot of people coming in to maximize their height yet. We're hoping we do as a part of this. If we need to come back and modify that, we can.
That was just one of, one of the, I mean, I know everybody, I know we're all concerned about affordable housing, but sometimes it's our requirements that add a lot to the cost. And so, if this is, if we can still accomplish the same environmental standard without it being certified, I just, I'd be fine with having that in there like that.
Thank you. Mr. Perry had a comment to that?
Briefly on that point, just on that point. LEEDs was everything in its day. There's twelve other, basically, major accepted green building standards that we, you know, so I think the language should probably say LEEDs or other acceptable green building standard. But as Robin pointed out, LEEDs is in our, in our code, in our Form-Based Code. There's the Bremen Standard, the Energy Star, the Green Globes, the Living Building Challenge, the National Green Building Association, the Green Guard, and pretty much, as Robin pointed out, everybody builds those standards because there's other incentives to build to those standards.
Exactly. Okay.
It is a good point you have. Specifying LEEDs is probably legacy.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, for letting, kind of, clarify that. Go ahead.
I, I appreciate all the work. I know staff has been working on this very diligently, and, and I appreciate that very much. But I'm still not convinced that we are there with what we've done, with the progress that we've made with workforce, specifically. We're talking workforce here, not affordable. And so, that, plus my anecdotal observation on other projects, even outside of the city or state, that do have an element of some units that are workforce housing. I believe that, my observation has been that those projects are successful because of the, the intermarriage of both workforce and market rate. So, I cannot in good conscience go for something that is going to eliminate the incentive, or not, eliminate the requirement that there is an incentive for the workforce housing. And I want to, you know, I welcome discussion while we're sitting here. That's why I wanted them to present today. But I just, I, I don't think that we're there, and I think that what we will find, because it's a relatively newer thing that people are, you know, and I mean municipalities, but not just in the state of Florida, but outside of it, I think that we potentially will find that we would be pleasantly surprised to have more interrelated workforce housing units within a market rate project. So, my position is that we should not eliminate. I back every other incentive. I love the timeframe, you know, I love that. I love that they have to come before city council, but I don't think that we should eliminate that.
And, and I appreciate that, and I knew that's where you were going with it, and that's, you know, why I allowed it to get on here today, because I think that's a very important discussion to have. Because when you look at the developers that are out there, and the people that want to do it, and if it was working before, we would see it, and we would, we would have already seen it, in my opinion. When you look at outside areas, and obviously, a lot of people compare Sarasota to us, but Sarasota built all of their non-affordable workforce housing units first. And now, there's some issues that are going, that they're going to do it now, you know, and twenty-five years ago, when they started, that wasn't even in there, and that's how those buildings got built, and the heights and all of that. When you look at what we've done, is we've put the affordable workforce houses first, and we've got seven-hundred in the city, and we've got several projects, hundred-and-ninety-nine, hundred-and-thirty-seven, I think eighty-three, eighty-seven, that are going on right now. And one of those things was, the only way those projects were sustainable was with great government involving, whether they're tax credits, whether the CRA is paying for it, whether county getting involved with ARPA or their TIF money, or those projects wouldn't be happening right now. And I think the thing that's important is that we now let the free market dictate to that. And I do believe, though, I agree with one thing that you said, just a different terminology, because we can say, section eight, attainable workforce, or, excuse me, affordable workforce. But now, there is going to be some, from what I've heard from some people, some attainable smaller units that will be where that younger person that doesn't want that fifteen-thousand-square-foot apartment, they may want a seven-hundred square foot, because they don't, we, as in our generation, want to live in our house. The younger generation wants to sleep in their house. So, I think the opportunity with what we're doing is we're giving that opportunity to say, here, tell us what you can do, and if there's going to be some that may come back and say, hey, I want some government help, I can do this with government help, and then we have to decide that. Also, with the new law, they can come in and do a lot of things without us. So, I think we're giving an opportunity to succeed overall, and that's why, you know, I support this in a way that's going to not only grow our downtown, but give opportunity for other areas in our city to get more opportunity to do what we talk about every day, sidewalks, roads, infrastructure, that without some of this, you know, we know the growth of some of our downtown will help spur everything else.
I don't disagree, if I may just respond.
Sure.
I don't disagree. I, my, one of my primary concerns is what I, what we've seen in the past, which is when it's all market rate, and there's no inclusion of any other bracket, that, yes, we turn them over, and yes, we, you know, there's ad valorem revenue for us there as a municipality, but then they remain vacant, and we're not going to have the vibrancy in downtown that we hope there will. That is also providing a, maybe somewhat more intangible, but also an economic benefit that I think should be recognized. And I, I believe that they, having those kind of, you know, the workforce and the, and the market rate together in a project actually assists the project's rate of success in, in getting that intangible vibrancy that we're looking for as well. I just don't want them all to be vacant. I don't want to give someone twenty stories so that they flip it once, and then there's, you know, no one living there.
I agree with the vacancy part of it. We don't want it.
We do not want it.
But, but I, that point can be actually spun in another way, because if they are at market rate and they're not renting them, what's going to happen? The rent's going to go down, 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 and then it is going to be affordable. So, I don't think developers are going to come in and say, hey, if we put in two-hundred units, and we want them for high market rate, and we only rent a hundred, what's the first thing they're going to do? They're going to lower their price because of the market. So, it will then become, without government being involved, in your core, urban core development, you know, because, again, we want people, we want heads in beds. The only way, you know, we've talked about that a lot. We put a parking garage in years ago, and a hotel, to get heads in beds, because if the heads are in the beds, the feet are going to be on the street, and that's what you want to get the development. And I think, so, I, I don't think we're far apart on kind of concept, and I mean, you can agree or disagree with me on that, but I think it's a good debate to have, and I'm glad that the public can hear it, because, you know, I did get one email that, that was it, that about it, and, you know, I responded like I normally do, thank you for being caring citizen, and please give me a phone call so we can discuss it, because we know propaganda gets out there, and we just want the truth out there. And then, if you disagree a little bit, we can talk about it. So, but I think that's something, and we're going to have another bite at this apple on November first. So, Ms. Coker?
Yeah. I think that, I don't think there's anything to preclude more affordable or workforce housing. I think our, my focus is to increase the density downtown, to encourage people to have the opportunity to live downtown, and, and activate the urban spaces, they can live near work, the live-work-play, all that. And to his, you know, the free market, if they're not going, if, I don't think they'll be vacant. I really don't, unless somebody just wants to sit there with, and own a vacant place. I don't see that happening.
Well, I think that, what I, what I mean to speak to primarily are maybe a more permanent ownership versus rental. The, I agree with you, the market probably will dictate rents, for sure. But if they're, if they're just condos, and we're selling them, then they're very likely to be vacant, because if they're higher-end, I mean, I just think that's the nature of who purchases high-end condos in a urban core. They have the, the ability to perhaps not spend twelve months out of the year in their home. That's, that is the nature of my concern, is the success of the projects. Plus, I also think that while we're, as a state, yes, we've got some momentum with affordable housing, I don't feel super comfortable sacrificing our progress in that regard for, and I think it's a, it's a valuable goal for us, for sure, to activate the downtown.
And I feel like this is also a decision that will benefit not just the people down in the downtown core, it's going to benefit all of our, all of our wards because of the increased tax revenue. It'll help us to have, you know, with our infrastructure, all of it. So, I think you have to weigh that as well, everybody, not just, so, and I think supply and demand are a big reason for the non-affordability right now, and there's a lot of things in the pipeline. So, I, you know, I'm definitely in favor of, of this ordinance, or this change.
Any other questions? Because like I said, we'll get more time to talk about it.
Yeah, and that, that's, that's pretty much what I'm about to say. We, we have some more time to discuss this, but I, too, am concerned. I mean, I'd like to look at the numbers and, and say, okay, we've got this much affordable housing being built, or this much is, you know, vision to be built. Where are we then when we add that all up to what we really need? So, if I can get those numbers, then I could probably fully understand and grasp that we would think of such a thing, which, because this would definitely almost eliminate the idea of affordable.
Let me just, and it's one thing to, you know, and I know where you're coming from and feel that, but one of the things that we've got to look at is location.
Yeah.
Because the location of where we're talking about doing this does not make it viable for a developer, whether it's to put money in, or whether it's to build the units, to make the project viable. So, we've seen that over the years, that we have vacant, dilapidated, or empty property because they can't make it work. So, in the new state policy that's come out, they can build it anywhere. So, you know, most of them aren't going to come down and try to build it on your waterfront. They're not going to build it in your urban core. So, that's where this is important, because, you know, and again, a lot of, when you look at this red, most of them are built out, you know, there's not a lot of properties.
I think I need to really take a little more time and look at the space that we have designated.
Right. But you also got to look outside the space, because that's where I think some of these developers that would come in and say, from, use the state's new statute, and say, hey, and say, hey, I want to build it here, because I can get the property for a lot less, and then I can make the project viable, and then they're going to say, how can the government help me? Because that's how you make those projects viable. Now, if we want to do something in here, and say, we're willing to give them money, because nobody's building affordable housing without asking for government inclusion, and I don't feel that we have to, in our urban core, I don't feel that we have to now give money, but they're not going to build it if they have to put stipulations on it like the affordable housing. And again, if we had done no affordable housing in our urban core, I would say, no, we need it. But since we have a lot of units, and I think we're going to have some other developers come in, in some of our outlying areas, real close to downtown, that are going to say, we want to put another 80 units. And again, I, you heard me say this, I think you did, where with our Riverview 6, you know, the five stories, you know, why are we wasting airspace? Why weren't they going eight stories? Why weren't they going 10 stories? Well, the government doesn't allow that in the, the, when they get tax credits, they can only go so high. Well, it seems like it would have been better to put a couple extra and get some more, but that's, that's things that I think are being looked at, so. No, it's, it's great discussion, and it's there, yes, ma'am.
Just one more. Just to Ms. Coachman's comment, that is kind of, that's part of the nature of the concern, though, but it's not totally, because I care about number of units, but I also think that when we say placement is important, I think it actually means, for me at least, I have concerns about the projects being singularly affordable, or singularly workplace, because you don't have that mixture. You're going, there's, in my opinion, there are dangers associated with just clumping them kind of together like that, and so that's what I would like to see, is just a little bit more encouragement to have that interplay of the different levels for a variety of reasons. And then also, just to be clear, what we're do, if, you know, if this ordinance is passed, that's also a form of assistance. So that's us also being actively involved in the market, just, you know, I, I want to clarify that by taking it out, we are actually providing assistance. We're not throwing money at people, but we're permitting them to save it, so.
What I would ask you to do is look at some projects in the city that are a mix, and look at Addison. Addison is a mix of different things, and think of the problems and the positives of it, I won't try to just put the negative in it.
Yeah, okay.
But Mrs. Coachman is well aware. Mrs. Coachman is well aware of that, because that is a mix, and, you know, so, we do have some background to look at, to know.
I just need, I'll.
You could just do the research.
Yeah, let me just, let me do a little more research and figure out how much of the.
All right, well, I think we've had some great discussion on our first reading, which we normally don't, but, any, oh, Ms. Barnaby, I'm sorry.
Well, I also think Mr. Kramer might have something.
He lets the ladies go first.
Okay.
The gentleman.
This is a very interesting, interesting discussion, and I think it's important that we have it. I think it's also important to realize, if we have 1,000 people a day moving into Florida, and I've heard anywhere from 100 to 300 people moving into Manatee County every month, as someone who grew up here and remembers the vibrant downtown, but also remembers the amount of agricultural that we had, and the amount of green space that we had, I think we have to look at the balance, because I think if we don't do some type of adjustment with our height in our urban core, in my lifetime, we're going to see rooftops from Palmisola Bay all the way to Arcadia. It's just going to be rooftop after rooftop after rooftop. And one of the things that, that, again, it's a balance, it's coming up with the balance, and if we are able to build in our urban core in such a way that it may free up some of the other green space, and to make that green space stay available, and to protect our, I mean, we don't have a lot of agricultural land in Manatee, in the city of Bradenton, but our agricultural land is getting gobbled up, and a country that can't feed itself is ripe to be taken over.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you, sir. So I'm bouncing two things, much like Councilwoman Barnaby said, not so much about the agricultural side, but location, 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 you know, that's big for a couple of people in this audience, versus the needs of getting people to be able to work. You're talking about a live, work, play, well, if you're going to live near where you work, you've got to be able to afford where you live, sometimes. And I, when I was talking with Mr. Perry about this, one thing I brought up is that a lot of government areas, a lot of, throughout Florida, at least down, one I know of, has created workforce housing for their staffs. If the developers aren't receiving any type of money, would they be able to put those three floors, or whatever, specifically towards specific categories of workers, such as first responders, or healthcare, or city or county government employees? Would that be something that would then be basically an incentive without being any type of tax or other subsidy? And I think the question Mr. Perry and I had was if it was any type of thing where they were receiving any type of federal money, and if any type of benefit from us would be somehow looped into that.
Are you saying that, so if they're?
I'm saying compromise.
Right, but what I'm saying is, if we, if the government isn't giving any money.
Right.
Then.
And it would have to be development-specific, I mean, it would be, but that would, I think that would.
If it's not from a CRA, if it's not from a government, if it's not from, and again, that was one of the things we talked about in, as we've gone forward, we've given a lot from the city to get some developments, a hotel, a 199 units at the Met, 137 units at 920, and we've given money for there, and those projects would not have, there would be nothing there still, if we wouldn't have given that government money. So if we want to come in with some and talk with them, and say, we're going to require this, then we're going to have to give money. They're not, the projects, from what everything I'm hearing, are not.
But is giving money and giving tax relief the same thing?
It's still giving money, but because then when you take away that tax.
Upfront, but is it upfront versus backend? I mean, is it differentiated legally?
Right. Well, if we give tax credits, then we're not going to have the ad valorem to then put into the rest.
I'm not saying give away the, give away at all, but I'm saying that's something, not everything, but something.
Could I just briefly address that?
Yes.
Because we had, we did have that conversation, and I've been intrigued by that whole concept about, you know, teachers, and people in healthcare, and public safety, and the like, and trying to incentivize that, those folks to live where they work, and the benefits associated with it. Obviously, if it uses any sort of state or federal money, and perhaps other types of government money, it's going to be a little bit more stringent. I, I think we really have to look at different types of applicable housing discrimination laws at play, because really, that's what you're dealing with. You're discriminating, picking one class over another for some sort of incentive, whether it's a pecuniary financial incentive by virtue of a reduced rent-controlled complex, or otherwise, a participation by CRA, tax credits, or the like. We'd have to look at that, but also, it somewhat fits into what you were saying, to the extent of, these units, some of them will have smaller units, some of them will not have, you know, these beautiful views of the river, or otherwise, and the like, and so perhaps the developer could put that into their proposal, and ultimately come back, so that council, as a matter of policy, can make a judgment, is it accomplishing our objectives here to do these multitude of different objectives that we have? And, and I think this is a great discussion, I think Robbins and her staff have done a really good job on it, and, and they're good points, but some of them, like affordable housing, that doesn't deal with permanent condominiums that people buy, it's multi-use, it's apartments. And we haven't talked, you know, we had a workshop on this, and the workshop had some folks from the development community explain what's viable and what isn't, as you integrate controlled rents on a project, and what lenders will accept, and when you increase height, the cost, and the viability of the projects. And so you could pass this law, that's great social engineering, nobody's going to use it.
And I think that's one of the things that, that we, we see because of what we've done now, you know, what we have given, and the two projects, Riverview 6, and the one farther down the street, which is more of a senior living, that without county help, and, because they came back to us twice on the CRA, we gave them more money, we gave them more, and then they were still dead in the water because of, you know, with the timeframe we're in, and the county, thank goodness, with the relationships we have, ponying up almost 2.5 million more dollars for those two projects, or they would still be the dilapidated area that they were. So, you know, those are the things that we have to think about, and that's what, again, you're looking at location, too. You know, those locations fit that, does that, and I'm going to kind of agree to tend to, disagree with you on the condo part of it, because that's the lowest number of units that are going to be on the, a project like here, that we've already seen it all. And Sarasota's different, St. Pete's different than us, you know, we have people that live year-round in the condos that are here now. You know, there's some that travel, but I think our condos are more heads in beds longer, I'm not going to say 12 months, but eight, 10 months, you know, and what's here now, because we aren't the buy it for X number of dollars, and that's your two-week summer home. I don't see that here, can't guarantee anything, but I don't see that here. All right, well, I think we've had, I guess, one last thing.
One last thing, because I, it really, government doesn't need to be telling them what they need to build. Let them build the best project they can. That, I think Bradenton is sorely missing some high-quality condo and projects market rate downtown. I'm great with incentivizing some other places, but we've got prime waterfront, and you talk to the developers, and they say the banks are shy, because there hasn't been anything that's sold at the right prices that they should be selling at. We're, we're undervaluing our dirt here. I, I think it's worth so much more, and I think when government starts telling you, oh, you got to, you got to house the nurses, or you got to house this, and I want to, I'm not against helping them, but I think we need to have our, you know, our prime real estate built to the best that it can be, because I just think that's, you know.
I think Mr. Perry.
Sound, you know, engineering for how this community will, you know, grow.
I think Mr. Perry made a great point, which, again, we all think it, we, in our minds, we think it, but to say that, okay, only this class of people can live there, that ain't going to work, and this, you know, I don't think the, I don't, and Mr. Rudis was shaking his head at that time, he's gone now, but said that, hey, if you say only a teacher, nurse, or firefighter, police officer can live here, there's going to be others that come in and say discrimination, because they should be able to, to live, you know, your, you might get yourself in a slippery slope there, so we want to be careful on that. Ms. Barnaby?
Yes, I just have a question for Mr. Perry, because I know you live out on Pariqa Island. Would you say that that development out there is a vibrant development? Would you say that there are people there year-round?
No.
Okay.
A lot of seasonal folks, a lot of the RBOs coming in, things like that.
It's sold as an RB, RVBO?
Some of them are run like, it's run like a hotel, parts of it are, I'm not sure which part he's.
The ones that permit it from the HOA perspective have a fairly intonerant occupancy, for sure.
Right.
And again, location.
Again, one more thing that the state preempted our ability to manage or control. Thank you.
All right, well, we've had good discussions, so we'll have the second reading and public hearing on November 1st. Thank you, Robin. Madam Clerk?
The next item on the agenda is Resolution 2382, a resolution of the City Council for the city of Bradenton, Florida, setting the public hearings for Ordinance 4018, adopting text amendment petition LU.23.3495, to be held as part of the regular city council meetings commencing at 8:30 a.m., and providing for an effective date.
Just by way of explanation, Ordinance 4018 includes the change of permitted and conditional uses, and per statute, one of your hearings should be held after 5:00, unless waived by the governing body. And then we feel that in this community, your normal hearings have more, are more attainable, more easier to, we're going to get more people coming to a daytime meeting than a nighttime meeting, short way to put it.
Okay.
Yeah.
What, do we need to have a vote on this?
Yeah.
To confirm? All right, so is there any questions or a motion? Yes.
Just, I'm forgetting, this is only for the limited purpose of this Ordinance 418 that is coming next.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Is there a motion to?
I will move to, to approve.
Approve Resolution 2382.
Yep, 2382.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward 2.
Yes.
3.
Yes.
4.
Yes.
5.
Yes.
And 1.
Yes.
Carries 5 to 0. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Item 7G is the first reading for Ordinance 4018, an ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending Chapter 2, Section 2.2.41, Types of Special Uses, of the Land Use Regulations of the city of Bradenton. To clarify the approval requirements for the expansion of special uses, amending Article 4, Table 4.7, Specific Function and Use of the Bradenton Form-Based Code, to add use categories including second-hand store and pawn shop, and changing the status of medical clinics in certain districts, and amending Article 12 of the Form-Based Code definition of terms, to define pawn shop, pawnbroker, second-hand store, and pawn shop, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for the repeal of ordinances and conflict, providing for retroactive application, and providing for an effective date. And the second reading and public hearing is November 1st as well.
Any questions on that, before we just push it to November 1st?
Real quick, is this a two-public hearing?
Yes.
So we do need to have a public hearing today?
Okay, so we didn't have that on there.
Okay. Again, Robin Singer, Planning Community Development Director, under this instance, we had discussed a number of issues, and in fact, put in place a zoning in progress, two consecutive ones that expired in September, and we were looking at a number of different uses in the Form-Based Code in the downtown area, and I think one of our discussions was about if you make something a special use, would it then have to come back if it was less than 20% expansion? And we said, well, it, it wouldn't necessarily, it would just go through an administrative approval. So we came back with a revised ordinance that says that if it is a use that is not listed, and in the particular case, there were some uses that we were going to change from not listed, and we were going to list them as special uses, in that case, they wouldn't have had a public hearing, so we're changing under special use criteria in the land use regulations, to say that if you're coming in for a use that is not listed, that would normally come in through a special use process, but it isn't depicted on either of the use charts in the land use regulations, or in the Form-Based Code, to say that it's a special use, it's a use that's not listed, that therefore, it would have to come back through city council for any kind of expansion. And I think the particular case we were looking at was for homeless facilities, because the two facilities that, the major facilities that we have in the downtown area had been through a prior public hearing process, so if they'd come back in for an expansion, you wouldn't get another look at those. So what we're doing with that change to the land use regulations is to say that you will have another look at those, if they come in to expand something that isn't listed in the use chart as a special use already. And then the other thing we're doing is essentially prohibiting pawn shops in the downtown area, but while still allowing for consignment, antique stores, and other thrift stores, and then also for medical clinics. We can't differentiate between the type of medical clinic and how we treat those, medical clinic is a medical clinic, so regardless of whether it is for drug treatment facility or just a regular doctor's office, it would have to be treated the same. So we're. So we're making those special uses in the downtown area to make sure that you have the opportunity to look at those. So if you have another major medical clinic coming in, you have the opportunity to, to see those as well.
Thank you. All right, so we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll have the second reading and public hearing on November 11th, 2023. No, what did I say?
11.
Oh, 11, I saw 11, 11, no, 11, November 1st, thank you, 2023. All right, I guess we're at the city administration part. Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, before council is the surplus property review. I'm gonna turn this over to Ms. Corey Fortin, who is a policies, procedures, and property administrator that's been working on that. There's a little bit of a history with it, there is also a connectivity to CRA. In short, what it's gonna involve is a host of different properties that are either CRA or city-owned. And Mr. Munyon is here to speak on behalf of CRA. And there's a little bit of a history where we'd taken this up before, and also some changes to the law. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Fortin for her capable explanation and information related to this subject.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Corey Fortin, Policy Planning, Procedure, and Real Estate Administrator. This public hearing is required by Florida Statute 166.0451.
Ms. Fortin, could you please pull the microphone down a little bit?
Sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. 0451, which states that each municipality must prepare an inventory list of real property within its jurisdiction, to which the municipality or any dependent special district within its boundaries holds fee simple title that is appropriate for affordable housing. During this hearing, council must review the properties and make any revisions to the list. Following the hearing, a resolution must be adopted that includes an inventory list of such property, and the list must be made publicly available on the city's website to encourage potential development. We will also be reviewing properties that may be declared as surplus, but that are not suitable for affordable housing, and adopting a resolution and an inventory list of those parcels as well. Some of these properties are good candidates that you may wish to deem a surplus and put out for solicitation of offers. This could be a good utilization of property that is no longer needed by the city to be used for redevelopment or affordable housing. This will also clear out our inventory of properties that are not currently generating tax revenue. There are 20 properties that we will review today. All properties shall be reviewed, and a determination made by council if they should be retained for future use, declared a surplus, and also determine which properties deemed surplus are potentially suitable for affordable housing. Pursuant to FS 166.0451-3B and the terms of the city's disposition of city-owned property policy, the inventory list will be added to the city's website, and will also include the required forms and procedures to follow for those who are interested in obtaining any of those parcels. The law does not provide a definition of what is appropriate for affordable housing, but a good filter to use is to ask whether the property is appropriate for market-rate housing. If the property can be used for residential purposes, it can also be developed for affordable housing. The declaration of city-owned real property as surplus is a discretionary act of council and is not subject to appeal. Council retains the discretion to amend the resolution at any time to remove parcels from the designation as suitable. Property that council does identify as appropriate for affordable housing may then be disposed of in one of the following ways. The property may be used for affordable housing through a long-term land lease, requiring the development and maintenance of affordable housing. It may be offered for sale, and the proceeds used to purchase land for the development of affordable housing, or to increase the local government fund earmarked for affordable housing. It may be sold with a restriction that requires the development of the property as permanent affordable housing. It may be donated to a nonprofit housing organization for the construction of permanent affordable housing, or the city may otherwise make the property available for the use in production. Let me try that again, for use for the production and preservation of permanent affordable housing. The CRA has expressed an interest in several of the listed parcels for redevelopment, and we have received inquiries on a few of the parcels before you for review today. Florida Statute 420.0004 provides that affordable means that monthly rents or monthly mortgage payments, including taxes, insurance, and utilities, do not exceed 30% of that amount, which represents the percentage of the median adjusted gross annual income for the households as indicated in subsections nine, 11, 12, or 17. These sections provide the percentages for extremely low-income persons, low-income persons, moderate-income persons, or very low-income persons. This is the list of properties that we will be reviewing today. The first three parcels are 1701, 1719, and 1723, Manatee Avenue East. Lot 1701 is a .2523 acre parcel with an assessed value of $108,725. Lot 1719 is a .1363 acre parcel with an assessed value of $74,365. And Lot 1723 is a .1353 acre parcel with an assessed value of $74,072. These lots are not located within a CRA. At a March 24th, 2021 meeting, it was decided that the size and location of these lots make them not suitable for affordable housing, but possibly of value to homeowners behind the lots as accessory dwelling units. It was decided at that time that the lots may be more valuable at a later date if the lots behind them were purchased by a commercial developer. The lot behind 1701 is a vacant commercial lot purchased in March of 2023 by KB Property Group LLC for $759,000. There is currently no curb cut onto Manatee Avenue for these lots. However, it is my understanding that FDOC cannot deny access. Ms. Singer has indicated that curb cut access could be worked out in the development process. All three of these lots are zoned T4O.
Mr. Perry, so what?
We've, we've discussed this with several councils, as well as the planning department. We don't think this is suitable for affordable housing, because of its location and configuration particularly. They're, they're fairly, the lot, the lots along that area, if you're familiar with it, is depicted in the photographs, are, they're wooded lots that are not very deep. And we think that the best possibility could be for the adjoining landowners to the back, particularly KB Homes, to potentially do that. So that was, that's what our recommendation is. We stand for any questions?
So would you, would we reach out to KB Homes and say we have these available, and?
I think that, as discussed, the options are, we retain them, we declare them surplus, or we take the property and declare it surplus suitable for affordable housing. Those are really the three options.
Well, if we.
And so with, with that being said, I think the best option for these is probably going to be to declare them surplus.
I would agree, but then would we then market them? Do we, to?
We would.
KB Homes?
Right, and, and we would.
Anybody.
And these are assessed values, I want to point out as well, they're not appraised values. And so we would obtain appraisals for the property as well.
Yeah.
So we put them to the open market, see what happens?
And, and that would all have to come back for approval from council, just to make sure you all understand that. Right now, we're just complying with Florida law.
Do we need a motion?
To say, put, to declare them surplus.
Okay, I make a motion that we declare 1701, 1719, and 1723, Manatee Avenue East, with their parcel IDs as surplus properties.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
And, and not suitable for affordable housing, I think, is, is the addition we need.
I'll allow that, a change.
I approve that as well.
Okay, so one question that I will ask to probably Mr. McClellan. Being the location of these properties on Manatee Avenue, do you ever see that the city would need them for anything for public works? Or in helping that out?
I don't think so, no.
Okay. All right, because I know there may be some that we get to that, that would be for public works benefit in the future.
Correct.
Okay.
And I'm remiss, I should've, I should've indicated Mr. McClellan's.
That's why I wanted to ask that, just so we had that on the record. Yes, ma'am?
May I ask Ms. Singer if T40, does that include? And I, I'm missing how big they are, but, oh, I see. Would, would that permit something such as a storage facility?
Because it's in the Form-Based Code, they would have to have retail on the ground floor, but they could have self-storage on the second floor and above. I believe so, I have to, yeah. Greg's nodding.
Is the, is the other option for us, that we just hold on to them? Maybe Mr., it would be?
It is, just on that particular question, and Ms. Singer, if you could just, I know you're gonna ask Ms. McClellan a question.
Yeah.
The configuration of those lots, I, I don't know if they're particularly suited. I can understand the concern about storage facilities, they're, they're fairly, they're not deep. And so I don't think they'd be suitable, but not a person that builds, builds storage units, yeah.
I, I can see our, our desire to have them benefit the properties behind them, and make those maybe something that somebody could build something really great on. My concern would just be that we put them out, and it's not those properties that buy them, and then someone improves it with something that maybe we're not trying to completely encourage.
Because we don't control.
And again, ultimately, council will have other votes on the, the sale of the property.
Oh, okay. So we could ask that question?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could, before we go down this road on the vote, I just wanna, from a procedural standpoint here, is our intent to come back with a resolution where we're going to determine which properties are going to be determined, deemed for affordable housing? If, if we're gonna do that, I think it makes sense to also bring back another resolution if we're gonna declare other properties to be surplus, rather than just doing them, you know, individually here. I think we could do it by consensus at this time, and we'll bring back resolutions to formalize that.
Will you withdraw your motion? So we can just?
Sure.
Consensus, say, yeah, this, this doesn't meet affordable housing?
Right.
This does, so then bring back the resolution with the two. And we, we believe this could be surplus, so.
Is there any timeline associated with this, Ms. Fortin, that's required by the state statute?
It does not state a time, it says following the hearing. My intent was to do it on November 1st.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Ms. Fortin, thank, I, I think that's a good suggestion.
I withdraw my motion.
Second, and then we'll do it in the resolution form. But we know these three don't fit affordable housing, but they do believe the council is open to surplus.
Right, and, and also, following up on Mr. Perry's comments, going to Councilwoman Moore's question, we could always limit, we could put a deed restriction. If we wanted to put the property out there as surplus, you could always put a deed restriction or something like that on it that might limit any particular uses that the city didn't want to have there.
Good to know.
Very good to know.
Okay, all right, next?
The next property is 519 Eighteenth Street East. This is a .6267 acre vacant lot. This site, this site and the one following were originally contemplated as an additional phase of the Braden cottages. The developer reached out in early 2022 with a revised proposal for these lots, but there is currently no purchase and sale agreement, and there has been no further contact since that time. This is zone T4R and has an assessed value of $57,800, and the two lots are located in the central CRA. Do you want to talk about both lots before we?
Yeah, let's do both, and then we can get a consensus of them.
Okay, and this is the second one, 520 19th Street East. It is a one-acre lot and is zone T4R with an assessed value of $86,700.
All right, so then the question would be, do these meet the criteria for affordable housing?
I, they seem like it.
We think they do.
We think they do.
Our administrator review was that they do, and I, I think Mr. Munyon is gonna speak earlier, and I don't know how mu, how, how much he's gonna talk about some of these properties, but I think there, there is some interest of the CRA, basically.
Who actually owns these properties?
The city.
The city, so.
There'll be, there'll be a list of properties out of the 20, and I think there are about eight or so that the city, that CRA owns as well.
Right, that's, that's why I was asking, because would we then, as the city, sell them to the CRA?
Yes, but they'd have to be surplus, publicly surplus.
Surplus from our standpoint, then we sell them to the CRA, and then the CRA decides whether they want to build them?
Or develop them as?
Develop them as something else? Or give them to Habitat for Humanity, or whoever?
Right.
Right.
On this one, we're recommending that you declare it surplus suitable for affordable housing.
So that would be just a consensus that would come back to us?
Right, by way of a resolution.
Both 18th Street East and 19th Street East, both of those properties?
Yes.
Okay, so, next?
The next property is 1125 Eighth Avenue East. A portion of these two parcels will be utilized for a pond, which is part of the East Side Stormwater Project. The portion of the parcels shown in red, which total .564 acres are, I believe, pursuant to Mr. McClellan, no longer needed for municipal purpose. The parcels will need to be replatted. We have obtained an appraisal on this property for just that .564 acres, which values the property at $110,000, with the highest and best use being residential. The replatted parcels may be returned for, retained for future use, declared surplus, declared surplus for suitable housing, otherwise offered for sale. The Truth Bible Church currently, currently has a lease on the property for parking and is expressed an interest in obtaining this parcel. If the city intends to sell to someone other than the church, we would need to give them 30 days' notice, pursuant to the terms of the lease. As this property is in a CRA, it will need to be advertised for solicitation of offers, whether it be from the church or anyone else, for 30 days prior to execution of any contract to sell, lease, or otherwise transfer. This is zoned T4R.
I'd also point out that on this property, if I may?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. This property, one of our residents has, has come to, before city council before, and there is the adjoining church, the church was interested in obtaining ownership of the property for purposes of parking. However, we needed to get a market-rate appraisal done, which we did on this property, at $110,000. So I don't know if that's viable, and I don't know if it'll sell at that, or whether, you know, the quality of the appraisal and the market value. It also was originally obtained for purchase, purposes of, I believe, flood control stormwater that has a natural swell in the back, that Mr. McClellan had an interest in retaining, an interest in, in, in the rare property, and I'll probably be better suited to let Mr. McClellan explain that. But I did ask him to see if we could carve out, because we had the interest from the individual that had the lease for the property, to purchase it with, with the city. And so I asked him to do a carve-out about, do we need it all? And he's, and he's hence done that, and said we don't need it all. But beyond that, I think Mr. McClellan probably should give further clarification, if necessary. Otherwise, I, I think quite honestly, because it isn't a CRA, it's going to have to be publicly advertised and, and surplus for the 30-day period. And it may be affordable for, it, it's a, it's a nice area.
Right, is it, so the question is, is it city-owned or CRA-owned?
It's city-owned.
So we'd have to then, that would be one that we'd say, does the CRA want to buy from the city? And then turn it into a CRA decision how you work with the community.
Okay, good question. So the orange is part of the flood control?
No, the orange is the part that we are talking about, declaring as surplus.
Selling? Selling? Is that, is that even buildable back there, where those hardwoods are and stuff? I mean, is that, it sounds like there's some swales and stuff? Is that wetlands or anything?
I think it prob- yeah, let me pass it off to Mr. McClellan to give a little bit of a condition assessment on it.
Good morning, Jim McClellan, Director of Public Works and Utilities. If you look at the left-hand side of the, the, the photo for the plots, that, there's an existing swale that runs north-south in that lot. It's all three of these lots that the city owns, and as part of our East Side Drainage Project currently, we've designed a pond to be built in conjunction with that swale, so basically expanding that swale and creating a stormwater pond for retention purposes. Originally, the design that the engineers came up with for us encompassed virtually all three of the lots, and we basically told them to go back to the drawing boards and come up with a different design because we wanted to try our best to, uh, provide a portion of this property as a potential use for the church for its parking capabilities. The long story, the church, when it was originally approved as a church, got approved without any designated parking area. So, they're kinda up against it, and we're trying to help them out. I don't believe the back portion of the property has, has any swale on it, so where you see the trees planted there, um, that could easily be converted into something buildable and in it, and from the church's standpoint, for parking space.
So, again, we'd have to surplus it from the city's standpoint, and then sell it to the CRA, and then let the CRA deal with it.
Well, we don't have to sell it to the CRA. Um, it just has to be surplus because it's within a CRA.
So, within the CRA, but then it would determine, if the CRA owned it, would it be easier to work with the church on something?
Perhaps.
So, the turquoise line, I, I, so we've got two lots here. I'm all confused.
There's actually three lots that the city owns.
Could you describe them perhaps, and I, I know you're looking at, it's on a po- it's on a, a, a memory stick.
If you, if you look to the, the left side of this, of the aerial photo, the rectangular lot that has the swale through it is owned by the city, and then it's the two lots to the east of that, including the turquoise outlined one. There's one to the north of that that is also owned by the city.
So, you're talking about redrawing it so that you would have more of a rectangular piece?
Correct.
Okay, and then the orange part, we would give, or work with the church?
Or, we'd have to surplus it, and then advertise it for thirty days.
But the intent is to?
To see who comes, comes to buy.
May I ask a question? Um, if we declare it to be suitable for affordable housing, does that tie the hands of the, in the, of, you know, in the situation where the CRA might be the purchaser, does that limit our, our uses? My, where I'm going with that is if the CRA purchases it and desires to maybe perhaps help with some affordable housing, but also work with the church in their plan, um, would they be precluded from working with the church? To have some, maybe some kind of shared parking or something like that?
Well, I can, I can only tell you that from the standpoint of laying out a parking lot for this area, I don't believe that a building on one portion of it and parking on the other would work, at least for the church's standpoint.
Okay, and I was just thinking also, like, statutorily, I didn't know if you knew if the statute said, oh, no, once you declare it affordable housing, then you've kind of said that that's what it's gonna be.
No, and again.
It can always change back, yeah, we're sure of that.
We're just designating it suitability.
Yeah, it's a good question, but, but, yeah.
Not tying our hands.
Suitability, that's a good way to look at it, yep.
Yes, you can remove that designation at any time.
Okay, I think you did mention that yesterday.
I think the, probably the thing right now is it seems like it's just surplus.
I think that's probably.
Maybe that is the thing, right.
Cleanest, easiest thing to do.
And, and that would allow the CRA to look at the suitability for affordable housing and perhaps some parking that could accommodate the ch- the church. I, I don't know if the church has the, uh, the financial ability to, you know, appraisal's a hundred and ten, I think, on it, and, and, and so, it, that might be something they could work towards. Yeah, and ultimately comes back to you, as far as what the proposal is, yeah. So, with, with that, we'd request the designation suitable, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, uh, as surplus, yep.
Okay, thank you, next?
The next property is one oh-two seventeenth Avenue West. This is a vacant parcel across from the wastewater treatment facility. This is a one-point-zero-four-four-two acre vacant parcel located in the central CRA. On December third, two thousand and eighteen, AM and FM Enterprise, Inc., presented a proposal to city council and requested that the property be donated to them for the purpose of building a high-quality adult services building. At a special meeting on April third, twenty nineteen, council approved the agreement with stipulations that the entity show financial viability and that a value of the property be assessed before assignment of the same. Either a lease, a reverter, or value of the property would go back to the city if the building was not used for its intended purpose. The former city administrator was directed to obtain an appraisal, but with the advent of COVID-nineteen, nothing else ever happened. We have had no further contact from AM and FM Enterprises. This is zone T four O and has an assessed value of three-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty dollars.
So, we are under no restrictions with the FM AM group? Alright, so.
We're, we're recommending on this property, Mayor, uh, that it be declared surplus and suitable for affordable housing, and further, you know, fur- further, uh, surplusing it may give us proposals regarding the suitability of, of affordable housing. It's a pretty decent lot, uh, but, and, and size-wise and, and location-wise, but, but the problem is the adjoining, um, wastewater treatment facility, frankly, yeah, yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
The old Florida Highway Patrol station.
Well, yes, that's where I was.
Yeah, where I took my driving test.
Where I took my driving test, too, sixteen, so. So, yeah, so I think that's suitable for everybody, surplus, and eligible for affordable housing?
Okay.
Alright, next?
The next property is nine oh-seven fifteenth Street West. This is a vacant par- parking lot across from the shuffleboard. It's a four-point-eight-nine-zero acre parcel. It's located in the fourteenth street, uh, street CRA. At the March twenty-fourth-twenty-one meeting, it was discussed that this could either be affordable housing or sold as commercial. However, it wasn't added to the surplus property inventory list at the time. It's zoned T four O and has an assessed value of ninety-nine thousand one hundred and seventy dollars.
Mr. McClellan? This was once talked about as being a retention area for our Weers Creek process, where we, what happened with that?
Um, it has not been designed in any way, shape, or form to be that. Just based upon council direction that we weren't going to do anything at that point. It was always in our thought process that it could be a pond, um, but there's also, I, I think there's some sort of relationship with the, um, shuffleboard court that allows them to use it as overflow parking for major events that they have. But I don't remember the last time it ever was used that way.
That's what I said, since we put the fence around it, it's never been used, that I've seen.
Mayor, we're recommending that it be declared surplus and suitable for affordable housing. Um, one of the reasons why we're recommending that is that it is on the Fourteenth Street corridor, where there seems to be a good deal of interest in affordable housing, the Met is down there. Um, there's a project that was approved by council, the old Shannon Funeral Home Parking Lot. I think it's just, no.
It's just the property next to it.
Okay, next, just next to it, yeah, just to the, the north of it, is what I'm thinking, currently ongoing. Underground development, basically, and, and concrete works, demolition, foundation work, and the like. Um, it, it's a tight property, because it's only half an acre, but it's something that, when we talked earlier about affordable housing on the outskirts and things like that in support of the downtown corridor, it is fairly close to the downtown corridor, and there, there, it seems like it could have the potential to put some decent units in there on that side, and we're trying to redevelop in that area. We're all familiar with the seven-eleven that's on the corner of Fourteenth and, and Ninth, right there as well.
No, and I think on almost a half an acre, you can put somewhere close to forty units.
Can I point something out, though?
Yes.
If you, um, if I'm got the right location, um, down at the, right at the end of that is the old City Hall site, and that might be.
No, you're, you're on Ninth.
This is Ninth Avenue.
This is behind Seven-Eleven.
Just behind Seven-Eleven.
This is directly.
Oh, yeah.
Cross from the shuffleboard.
Shuffleboard.
So, this, this isn't like catty corner from Najmi? Okay, and then I don't know where this is. I mean, I know where it's.
You do, yeah, you know it.
You know where the shuffleboard court is?
Oh, yeah, of course.
And Ballard Elementary is right there.
It's the.
Same side of the road?
Across, across the street.
Across.
Behind the seven-eleven.
So, we're, the recommendation is surplus it, city-owned, and designated affordable housing?
Yep, suitable for affordable.
Suitable for affordable housing.
Yes, yes, sir.
And that is, is that in a CRA?
It is.
It is, I believe.
Fourteenth Street.
Tammyam Trail.
Thank you, I've been biting my tongue.
Can I ask one more quick question, too, about how this works? Um, if we, it's so, would, would a potential purchaser who saw our, our suitability designation, would they then have to, like, undergo rezoning and whatnot to make it some kind of residential zoning versus the T four O?
No.
Okay, that's part of, I think that's part of the statute, the other.
And furthermore, because it's T four O, it's mixed use.
Okay.
Um, and therefore, under the Lib-Local Act, they could build to the highest density.
And so, this is outside of that urban core that we're talking about from the others.
Yes.
That's the Tammyam Trail, um, area that will, I think, have a lot. I think there's opportunity to do, even on private property with, but we gotta see if the, the new law will come into effect.
Yep, so our request is to designate it as surplus, uh, suitable for affordable on that one.
Perfect.
Ms. Forten?
The next property is eleven oh-five Eighteenth Street West. This is a point-two-five-zero-seven acre vacant parcel located in the Fourteenth Street CRA. By Resolution twenty-one dash thirty-seven dated March twenty-fourth-twenty-one, council declared this property as suitable, as surplus and suitable for affordable housing. But nothing was done at that time because a neigh- neighbor was illegally storing equipment on the lot. That situation has been remedied since then. It is zone T four R, it has an assessed value of fifty-five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and we have received several inquiries on this lot.
So, city-owned, surplus, affordable for affordable housing?
That's what our request would be.
Alright, any concerns about that?
And I have talked to the CRA, they're kind of agreed with it on that.
Alright, moving forward?
The next lot is twenty-one oh-four Twelfth Avenue West. This is actually an improved lot. It is a four-point-eight-nine-zero acre lot that was acquired by the city in the settlement of an inverse condemnation associated with the dredging of Weers Creek. There are no restrictions on this property, and it is not located within a CRA. The total cost of the sel- settlement to acquire the property was three-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. The city is currently completing a re- replat so that when the property is disposed of, we will retain a maintenance easement. It's zoned R one and has an assessed value of three-hundred and, sorry, four-hundred-and-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy dollars.
Mr. McClellan?
Yeah, if I could just take a quick stab at it, um, it, it's own residential, single-family, and, uh, from what I understand, when we were doing the dredge, um, there was some, uh, embankment, uh, uh, deterioration, and the landowner bought an inverse condemnation lawsuit. We were, it went through a s- uh, the initial litigation, it was recommended that the water fund purchased the property, which they did. We're rec- we're requesting that it be deemed surplus and that we take it to market and sell it. Those proceeds would have to be returned to the water fund as the initial purchaser of it, in my opinion.
Thank you. That's what, that's what I was gonna ask, you know, the, all the purchases or just the, what we paid?
The, the purchase of the property was provided for out of the stormwater fund, the utility fund for the stormwater utility.
If there was a surplus, it's a great question, that profit, I don't want to use that term, or government, we don't, we don't know that word. But, um, that surplus in excess of what we paid for it, because we think the market rate could be more than the three-ninety, uh, with what's happened with market rates. It's a beautiful piece of property, the, 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 the dwelling house itself is in very good condition, from what I understand, and we do have a maintenance easement currently.
Well, we had actually carved out a maintenance easement in the southeast corner, that triangle back there, which is adjacent to where the bridge is on Twelfth Avenue. Um, we had carved out the easement in part of the process of trying to settle the lawsuit, and that, that fell through. So, the easement is defined, I don't know that it's been.
So, it hasn't been replatted?
It hasn't been replatted because we own the property.
Right. But, but we, but if we were to surplus it, we would replat?
Correct.
And, and, and record the easement to perfect our ownership interest in the, the easement.
It is on Weers Creek, and it's a beautiful piece of property, as you said, and it actually could possibly put two homes on a piece of property right on the creek if a developer came in. So, I think it's something that, that we market correctly. Because, you know, again, we're not trying to, to make a million dollars, but we shouldn't give it away either.
I also will echo the sentiment that I would like to see those funds be returned to the.
Well, I think that the, the three-hundred-and-ninety thousand should be returned. I'm not so sure that if there was an excess on top of that, I'll defer to council as policy and, and legal on that one.
Come up with a great plan, Jim, and you might get to keep it. Maximize, so just surplus.
Just designate it as surplus, yes, sir.
Yep, alright, next?
The next property is twenty-one oh-one Fourteenth Street West. This is a point-two-seven-five-five acre vacant lot located in the Fourteenth Street CRA. This is the former, uh, Star Gas Station site. It has not been remediated and is not suitable for housing at this time. There's a site assessment in the file that states that additional soil and groundwater assessment is necessary in order to determine the extent of the impacts prior to redevelopment. On August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, Twillinger Engineering LLC filed a low-scored, low-scored site initiative on our behalf with FDEP, which would provide funding for assessment and remediation of the lot up to seventy thousand dollars at no cost to the city.
If I could just add a little bit onto this, we're all familiar with the Star Guest, most people, I think, with the Star, with the Star Gas Station site, and it's brownfield designation, when we took a look at this property and what to do about it, we said, we're gonna have to basically figure out how, what it would take to remediate it, and so we asked Jones Edmonds, our consulting engineers, to look at the environmental, um, questions associated with that, and they said just to, um, to assess it would be, I think, five thousand dollars. And so, we're in this situation where maybe we're putting good money after bad. Subsequent to that, Twillinger approached us unsolicited, who said, we do work with local governments on environmentally contaminated brownstone properties, and there's a program that's available for thirty-five thousand dollars, um, to conduct the assessment, and then another thirty-five thousand dollars to actually do remediation. So, we're exploring that in order to say, what is the best use of this property? We'd recommend that we retain this property until we have those answers.
Oh, I do have a question, though, with, with, obviously, we gotta do what we gotta do because of the brownfield and all of that, what it was, but if we didn't own that property, would we be code-enforcing that property?
Uh, I don't know, I know it's fenced, and I think the fence is in decent condition when I've driven by.
I've made phone calls before.
It's, it's, I'm just saying.
And I'd love to have that fence removed.
I, I don't think we want to remove that fence.
That fence is, it's not.
Well, the fence is not in great repair, but, but, and the trash gathers, you know, and so.
Right.
I would just like us as a city.
I'll get with Mr. McClellan, take a look if that's possible.
Because if we're gonna ask people to do things, we should be doing them as well.
Totally agree. It has been worse than that picture.
Oh, I know, because I called and got it, we went out and picked up tons of garbage that had got thrown in there. And the fence is not in great repair.
I thought, I thought it was decent shape, okay. But we are recommending, um, uh, retent- retention on that, not suitable for affordable.
Because, again, that is kind of a part of an entrance to our city.
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, it's Twenty-first, and so it's five blocks away from the territorial boundary of the city, yeah.
Because the house is next, there's an empty lot next to it now, there's another house that's dilapidated on the back. And, you know, so I, we may not control all of that, but we control the corner. Even if as we go through, we decide to keep it, we may need to beautify it.
And this, I know the CRA, Mr. Burton, has. And this, I know the CRA, Mr. Burton has, and, and, and Ms. Mignon, Mr. Mignon has been looking at some of those Fourteenth Street properties on the south boundary of the city. Um, looking at some potential to continue our development down the Tamiami corridor.
There's obviously a reason we have it, that we have that property because it became a derelict property, nobody wanted it. And it's very small and, but we still need to do the right things for the looks.
Yes, sir. Swarden?
Next is eleven oh eight Second Street West. This is a point zero nine one eight acre vacant parcel located in the central CRA. It was acquired on September ninth, twenty twenty-one by voluntary quitclaim deed. It is zone T four R and has an assessed value of thirty-two thousand six forty.
And it is in the CRA?
Yes, sir.
Yes, in the central CRA.
And I've spoken with Mr. Burton about this property, who has an interest potentially through CRA for redevelopment purposes. Um, we'd request that this be de- designated surplus suitable for affordable housing.
Agreed, everyone. All right, next.
I think, uh, Mr. Mignon's gonna take it, that was the city's list of properties.
Thank you, great job.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chris.
Good morning, uh, Chris Mignon, CRA manager. So, as alluded to, we have been looking and are in the process of identifying some properties that are on your list, uh, for the purchase with the, with the CRA. And what would be viable for affordable housing there. So, um, so for the CRA properties, most of these properties are in the central CRA. Uh, the first property up is ten thirteen Sixth Street East. This is an improved property, this was a substation for the police department at one point. Um, at this moment, it's a, uh, one thousand three hundred and sixty-nine square foot, three plus two uh, home that was built in nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, the lot size is forty-seven fifty-seven square feet. It's zone T four R. Um, it was purchased in two thousand and six, uh, for a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Uh, the property appraiser value is two hundred and thirty thousand. Uh, currently, the house is vacant. It was going to be part of a disposition, uh, of properties with the CRA. It was pulled off to see if it was gonna be better used as, um, uh, not residential and maybe some sort of center or things like that. Um, it's not been put back, posted for sale yet. Um, but this is a property that, um, is, you know, uh, primed to be rehabilitated or, you know, uh, redeveloped. So, um, is that one?
So what is your suggestion to surplus it?
Do you think, Jeff?
Surplus it for affordable housing sale?
Yeah.
Hopefully homeownership.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, you guys can put that stipulation in.
Right, so that's.
Homestead it.
So.
That would be the first one, that will still have to come back. Now, does that go back to the CRA or does it come back to the city?
That's a question, Mr. Rousseau, do we have to have the CRA?
Why are we doing it in a city meeting?
If the CRA owns it, ultimately, it will go to the CRA board.
Why are we doing it in the city meeting?
I believe the city council, I know we've looked at this, I believe the city council's still required to declare whether or not it's
In the CRA.
Appropriate for affordable, suitable for affordable housing.
We're gonna say appropriate for surplus and affordable housing.
Yep, so, uh, the next property here is, um, a vacant piece of property. Um, it's at six oh three Tenth Avenue East. The lot size is fifty, uh, one ten, so five thousand one hundred and ten square feet. The zoning is T four R. Uh, it was purchased in two thousand and five for ninety-nine thousand dollars. Uh, the estimate is forty thousand eight hundred. Uh, the house, there was a, a structure on it. It was demoed in two thousand and twelve, that's why the difference in the, the property appraiser value. It's currently just a vacant property and, um, I believe it's suitable for surplus.
A question would come to me or from the public, why did we do that? And I know the answer, but.
Yeah, we, well, the, the mission of the CRA is to remove slum and blight, so the house was ablided, I'm sure. And, you know, we purchased that house to.
So.
Take care of that.
Deemed affordable housing, I mean, uh, surplus and suitable for affordable housing. Okay, next. Don't hear any comments, questions? Next. We got a long day, so.
Yeah, so these, these, there's the next two parcels, and I'll kinda flip through here. So you can see they're adjacent parcels. Um, they were purchased together. Um, the first parcel here, let's see here, uh, five thirty. Um, the lot size is five thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, the both are zoned for T four O. Um, you know, it is on Ninth Avenue East, so it, you know, it has that, um, zoning. Uh, it was purchased, both lots were purchased at a hundred and fifteen thousand. Each lot is, uh, appraised at forty thousand eight hundred. Uh, currently, they're vacant properties and, um, so they can be, it's one of those things where maybe if you combine the two properties, there'd be more, you know, uh, higher invest use kinda situation to where we could do something more substantial. Um, but that's, that's.
Surplus, suitable for affordable housing, depending how you break it down.
Well, they need to be joined, the properties need to be joined.
Together, it's ten thousand fifty-six square feet, so it gives you a little more room to, to do something special.
I'm even concerned about that last one. That was a pretty tiny little lot.
You know, then there's opportunity for other organizations, and I mean, we Habitat for Humanity, maybe they could.
Well, yeah, but it's still a small lot for a building.
It, it, I, I know where it is, yeah, it is. It used to be a cute little house, a little.
Oh, yeah, yeah, back before.
But I've seen them build homes in that area that just goes straight like a shotgun. You know, kinda thing. Um, so it's big enough for like the one that's on the corner from there.
So surplus, affordable, suitable for affordable housing. Okay, next.
This is, um, twelve, no, this is six thirty-six, I'm sorry. Okay, six thirty-six Tenth Avenue East, the lot size is fifty-five hundred square feet, uh, zone T four R. Uh, it was purchased in two thousand and seven for sixty thousand dollars. Property appraiser value is forty thousand eight hundred. It's currently vacant, there was a structure on the property and it was demoed in two thousand and seven. So, same, similar.
Similar, suitable, I mean, uh, surplus, suitable for affordable housing. Okay, all right, next.
Next up, we have twelve twenty-three Eighth Street East. Um, this lot is forty-seven hundred square feet. Zone T four R, purchased in two thousand and seven for sixty thousand dollars. Uh, PAO is forty thousand eight hundred. Uh, the, it's currently a vacant property and it was, had a structure and was demoed in two thousand and seven as well. So we believe this is.
Same thing.
Same.
Surplus, suitable for affordable housing.
So, this next home is, um, nine thirteen Third Street East. This is already an approved home. Uh, basically, we have tenants in this home. Um, they are on a month-to-month, there would have to be a notice, um, to vacate the property if we look at doing something different. It is another one to where, you know, you would look at either rehabbing it to go out for like a fee simple, because, you know, CRA isn't, we're looking at, you know, not being a landlord anymore as a CRA. Um, and it's just better served probably as a fee simple. Um, so this could be redeveloped or, um, renovated as such. So at, at this point, it's a twelve ninety square foot, three plus two. It was built in nineteen ninety-eight. The lot size for this property is eight thousand five hundred and thirty-two square feet. Uh, zoning is T four R. It was purchased in two thousand and nine for fifty-one thousand one hundred. The property appraiser value at this moment is at two hundred and nineteen thousand, and as I said, it is currently occupied by a tenant. So, um, we do feel that it would be a good rehabil- rehabilitation or redevelopment for affordable housing.
Surplus, suitable for affordable housing.
What kind of notice or is there, would there be any?
I believe it's an IDA notice.
Sorry?
A ninety-day notice.
Have you in any way contacted the runners?
No, that's, we have a property management company that works with that.
Has the property management company contacted the runners?
Not, not in regards to that type of, um, to selling the property or anything like that.
I just don't wanna pull it out from under them.
Well, I seem to remember that when we had this discussion and the CRA board was saying that they did not want to be landlords anymore. Um, I thought we went to a month-to-month with them and, and they were instructed at that time that anything could happen.
Um, it, it, at the time of that, yeah, I believe that the leases were already at a month-to-month at the time of that decision. Um, and it, being a month-to-month lease, I'd have to look at the lease, you know, to, to really determine what, I believe it's a ninety-day notice, um, but I don't know what the language in regards to us selling it, but.
That's my question.
Right.
Well, I mean, do we know about the condition of it? I mean, seems to me we just wanna do a straight sale.
If it's in decent condition, just sell it.
Because the value is, oh, did I hear you say that it was over two hundred thousand or about it?
The property appraiser has a two nineteen, but, you know, basically, we don't know what the inside entails, so it just all depends. But that's, we'd have to get a, probably get a formal appraisal on the property.
Would we not do that on all the properties?
That's, you, you can, you can make that decision, you know, city administrator.
I, I know some counselors and, you know, it's a CRA process that would come back for approval by council on any potential sale. But some of the council has indicated that, um, we want more permanent homeownership than rentals, and understandably so. So I would imagine that you can probably fashion a deed restriction or something a little allure of, something like along those lines that would include that and incentivize that type of, uh, permanent home in ownership.
Well, but my question was with the appraisals is, you know, not that we're gonna sell them at that, but I think that the value of making we sure we know where we're at, because again, we've talked about selling them, we've talked about donating them in a way to like a habitat that's gonna put a home on there, so you'd want to know, or selling it to habitat at a discounted price. You know, but you, you need to know. A prudent way to.
I don't know if it, um, is relevant, but, uh, I have a notion that it's different if it's city-owned versus CRA-owned. And I, I don't know that I have a solid basis for this, but I'm more inclined to go with the, the more valuable market rate as just, just surplus.
Perhaps Dr. Burton can opine on that.
That's probably a good idea.
Well, I think you get some people, we paid a hundred and twenty-four and we're selling it for thirty. And I know the concept of the.
CRA seems more appropriate for that than the city, is my thought.
Good afternoon, good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, this time, I would request that the CRA board discuss the CRA board business. And the city is here to discuss surplus, which is the city council's and the mayor's authority. So, if we could just keep it to.
Okay.
Surplus and affordability, then the CRA will then come back and talk about, uh, what to do as a strategy.
Good.
Uh, the CRA board should discuss that in their meeting. Just keeping everybody on the straight and narrow.
And that's why I ask, should we be even discussing this at the beginning, but when they said it was a city.
City council, city council in, in this, uh, in this action is about surplusing. Anything that is sold, CRA or city, has to be surplus by the city council. So, if you would just, uh, decide to surplus or not, I'd appreciate that.
So let me ask you this question, why are we doing this before the CRA has discussed that?
Because you have a state law that, where, where did you? You have a state law that says you're supposed to do this, so we're just going through the, we're just, we're just meeting the state statute.
Which is fine, so I.
Yes.
I wanna come and talk at the CRA meeting, then I can come and talk.
You sure can.
Yeah.
So, please surplus and make your decisions and we'll, we'll get through this and make, uh, the city compliant with statute.
May I just ask one clarifying question?
Mr. Rousseau has a comment first.
I was just gonna say that, so, this was a new addition to the statute that, you know, it, it used to be that the city had to, um, you know, determine based on the properties that were owned by the city, then it was added to include any dependent special districts of the city. So now we have the C, it is a little bit awkward that the city council's making this decision on CRA properties, but ultimately, they will be, they will go to the CRA board before they're disposed of.
Well, I would suppose, and again, I was against the way we did the merging of the CRA, and I've stood behind that over the years that, you know, cause we disenfranchised many boards that were involved. I would say that was changed for a reason that most times, decisions weren't made by the city, they're made by individual boards. We just happen to be the same board. So, okay, that makes sense.
Uh, the question was, um, as, and, as, in the purview of your knowledge of CRA law, is there any policy or whatnot that the CRA, when it gets to be its turn, um, should be thinking about as far as affordability and, and income producing for the CRA?
Affordability, according to the statute, is low to moderate income. Uh, we choose to use the uh, definition used by the Florida Housing Coalition and the Florida, uh, Housing Finance, uh, Corporation. And, which is also pretty much the HUD stat, the HUD standard. Um, that's in your new plans, defined. We find that across the state, those definitions are across the board, there's not a lot of agreement on them. But we wanted to find this for you, so we will talk about that in the CRA. The other thing that we have to remember, and this is from a court case in the city of Tampa, a couple of years ago, that if it's in the CRA, there is a stat, part of the statute for CRAs is that you have to sell your property a certain way. And that not only is for CRAs, but for cities and for counties that own property in a city CRA. So, when you heard the thirty-day mentioned, uh, we will follow that process. And, um, and when it comes to city-owned property in a CRA, the city will need to follow that process also. So, um, um, but again, at this point, this board at this time is about surplusing property. That's the authority that this board has right now. And you're doing it to, to meet compliance with state statute, which I think is every three years you have to do this, yes. So, uh, and don't feel bad because when I left Tampa, guess what they were doing? The same thing. And City of Palmetto, the same thing. So, it, it's new, it's a little different, according to the attorney, and we're getting through this and you're just meeting the state law at this time.
Is the city of Tampa, um, also their CRA board?
Yes. In fact, the interesting about that is, is that they are exactly the same structure as the city of Brighton, where the mayor is separated from the CRA board itself. So, that's interesting, cause Fort Myers, the mayor is a member of the board, but an equal member of the board. And in Palmetto, the mayor is the presiding officer of the board. So, uh, across the state, three hundred and thirteen CRAs, and, uh, each one of them is a little different, so.
I appreciate you bringing up about the thirty days and reiterating that because since Mr. Perry's been here and we had a, an opinion, we did that on a previous sale or what we did with some things in previous city-owned property at the detriment to some that said we weren't doing it legally, we did it legally.
So, so.
Follow the statute.
We, we do our best to follow all court, uh, all case law.
Right.
Statute is a little vague sometimes. That's where the case law comes in, or an attorney general's opinion, or, um, you know, a best practices policy by the association. So, uh, as I've told, uh, I tell everybody, when it's a vague area, we make sure we document policy, is it in the plan, is it in the statute? Talk to the attorney and give him the best case that we can if we decide to go into that gray area. And the minute that a legal authority. And the minute that a legal authority says no, we stop. Because it is a gray area, but that doesn't mean we should be afraid of it, we should just be professional and responsible. So, again, have fun surplusing.
I think we're done, aren't we?
Surplus to your heart's desire.
One more, let's get it.
One more.
We agreed that we're going to surplus this.
Surplus it and it meets the availability for affordable housing. I think all of them are.
I think, yeah, they're...
I think they already are.
Is there someone still in this other one?
Yes. Yes, so this, uh, is nine sixteen, uh, Third Street East, so it says adjacent property, it also is an impero three plus two. This one is twelve seventy-two square feet, built in ninety-eight, lot size is fifty-seven sixty. Zoning is T four R, purchased in two thousand and ten for forty-seven five hundred. Uh, property appraiser has it at two fourteen five hundred, currently is occupied by a tenant.
Is, does this, is this adjacent, do we own the ones beside it too, the vacant ones?
Yes.
I thought we didn't want to surplus it because we wanted to have that ability to assemble.
We can have that ability to assemble?
Was that with the Brandon Commons? No.
I just thought we were holding it for assemblage. If it was...
Pull them off.
Right.
Well, that's CRA.
You're right.
Do you want to surplus it for affordable housing, or not surplus it?
I think we can still say surplus and affordable housing, but then the CRA has to decide how we're going to...
Yeah.
How we're going to put it.
But if we surplus it, if they surplus it, can the CRA not sell it? Or do we have to sell it? Okay. Okay, then city, let's let the city surplus it.
Surplus, it's suitable for affordable housing, going to go back to that board and decide next steps.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and that's it for me.
That's it, all right.
Sorry, can you show the parcel before that, please?
Yeah, it's right next door.
Oh, so it's next to it, okay.
So one of those addresses is wrong.
One of them.
You can't be nine thirteen next to nine sixteen.
Oh, yeah, you can.
Oh.
I'm just saying.
I would go with our police officer, uh...
Yes.
Really?
Even numbers would be on the west side of the roadway.
There are somewhere, doesn't it?
Realtor and the police officer can fight it out later.
I'll let you know who's going to win.
You're probably familiar with that house.
But that's for a CRA meeting.
All right, thank you, Chris, thank you, Corey, great job. Uh, moving on to new business by department head, city attorney and counsel.
Mr. Mayor, just, that was a public hearing item, so we
Oh, it was?
Are required to open it up. Here we go.
Oh, it does say public, all right. We'll open the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And, and there was no vote to be taken on that, it was just going to be brought back to the appropriate boards. All right, thank you, Mr. Rudisell. Um, new business by department head, city attorney and counsel, Mr. Perry.
Nothing from administration this time.
Okay, you're gonna, you had on their update, we're gonna bypass the update, okay. At this time, not enough information, all right? And then unfinished business, Madam Clerk?
There is no unfinished business on the agenda today.
Counsel reports that will start in Ward, I believe it was two.
I knew you were going to do that.
I rotate around.
Um, just want to remind everybody that, uh, Crime Stoppers will be doing their, um, Halloween program that they, that they usually do, and I believe that the Branton Police Department will be working with them on that, as well as a, a, there's probably a couple of other community trick-or-treating events that are going on, and, and, um, I thi- I think that at this time of year, that's kind of one of the things that everybody looks forward to doing and having a good time. Um, I, I was really excited to see the Karnes family here. They are such a nice family. And every, every child that was raised in that home is a good person. And it, it's just nice to see good people having good things happen. So, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Ward three.
Thank you, sir. Uh, there is a candy fest at Christ Episcopal Church on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, from five to seven thirty P M. It's very similar, trunk-or-treat style. Uh, so hopefully, everybody can enjoy that. Are you okay if I mention the Kiwanis?
Sure, definitely.
Um, there will be a historical marker that's posted just outside of the Bradenton Tropical Palms Trailer Park, uh, noting the historical contributions from the Bradenton Kiwanis Club, uh, that used to be Kiwanis Park for many years. Uh, and, uh, that ceremony is Friday, the twentieth, at ten A M. Hopefully, everybody can make it. I will be there briefly and then have to depart. Um, but, uh, yeah, it's a great, great event, uh, that community's, uh, well-engaged in a lot of what we do in the city. Uh, a lot of snowbirds there, but they still, when they are here, they're deeply involved. And, uh, happy birthday to my niece Lily and my brother Jeff.
Oh, yay.
Thank you. Ward four.
I attended the, I think I, I think I mentioned, I know we did, actually, I, Mr. Perry and I had a chance to talk about this, but I attended the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council meeting on Monday, and I thought there were some interesting things I would share with you all. Um, for general public, the, um, SBA is offering known, loans for Adalia survivors for three different categories, economic injury, business property damage, and residential homes damage. The deadlines are, for at least one, is as soon as October thirty-first, so if that, we have anyone that falls in that category, for those that did get some water in their homes or businesses, um, you can check that out on their website. The, um, they, that council also collaborated with, um, with a consultant and the University of Florida, uh, to perform a regional vulnerability study, uh, assessment, and they created a mapping tool that they were highlighting at the meeting, and I know that we are about to do some vulnerability assessment, uh, work, and so I just throw out there that the tool seems to be one that someone else could pick up and begin to use. So, if maybe, if Mr. McCollin or anybody in your department would like more information about that, I would be happy to share, connect you to their staff person that was working on that. And then, they also have their upcoming summit, I've mentioned that before, in May, but they are asking if anyone has any particular topics that they would like included in the summit. Um, and so with our ongoing efforts with PSOC and other resiliency program, uh, programming and projects, if anybody has anything that they know of that would be a, a relevant topic for them to present upon at the summit, I will be attending it. Um, and I provided that information to Ms. Melton, if there's any staff, um, or any other council members that would also like to attend. But that way, I can come back and report to you on a specific issue that we've asked them to basically research and present about. And then, finally, the Back to Angola Festival is coming up on the same day as the Kiwanis Marker, but later in the day, so we can all attend both. Um, uh, and that is happening on the evening of Friday, October twenty. Um, it kicks off at six P M., and I'll be providing opening remarks, and so I welcome anyone to join into the fun.
Right, thank you, Ms. Coachman.
Looking forward to that.
Yeah, I am too.
It's a lot of fun. Uh, I just want to say, uh, something similar to what, uh, Councilwoman Barnaby said about the Karnes family. I'm just getting to know, uh, Brandon, even though my son said, "Mom", I used, we used to be on, at PAL together, I'm like, okay. You know? But, um, um, so there's a history between my son and Brandon, they know each other. But Brandon's older brother, Brian, works at Lee Middle School. And just to confirm that, yes, that family is doing an awesome job, his big brother is a, an awesome young man and quite a mentor and a, a positive, uh, young black male to all the children at Lee. Um, but it's just, it's, it's a great family, and some of them go to my church, so I really know they're good people. Um, and just one other, just little crazy note, when we were doing the proclamation for the pharmacies and so forth, I thought about back in the seventies, my first job, my first summer job was, uh, being a pharmacy courier at Manatee Memorial Hospital. My mom would take her shoes off and give them to me, because she'd get off at three thirty or four o'clock, I had to go on from five to ten. And those shoes were comfortable, because at that time, you go to every nurse's station and pick up a paper requisition for whatever drugs that needed to be, you know, um, filled, prescriptions filled. And then, after all of them are filled, you make your rounds again and drop them off. I knew the ins and outs of Manatee Memorial. Now, I would not ever think about that time of night walking through the stairwells of, uh, Manatee Memorial Hospital. But, uh, that did take me aback, my good old pharmacy courier days.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I forgot one thing.
Okay.
If I could, please. And Ms. Milk, if you could turn on the Elmo for me, please?
Has to be something.
I think it's a baby.
Yes, just put it on the glass. My money's on FSU.
Oh.
Oh, my goodness.
We can see.
I am indeed a great aunt of him, and I want to say welcome to Kirby Duke Cottingham up in Tallahassee.
So sweet, exactly, I know.
Our parents are Jenny and Craig Cottingham. They're both, uh, Craig is a teacher and Jenny is a school guidance counselor. Welcome, Kirby.
Yeah, Mike, that should have a ward in front of it, I think.
Ms. Coker.
Okay. Um, I had the opportunity to attend the Village Green Homeowners Association just this past Monday, and I want to thank them for inviting me, it's always great to hear from them, they were very excited to hear about everything going on with City Hall and, um, the water taxi, I didn't know how to answer that uh, when that was going to start. Uh, so they're looking for an update on that, but, uh, you know, they, the Village Green neighborhood, if you don't have a chance to drive through there, they do such a nice job. Part, only a portion of it is a mandatory HOA, and so, um, I think they do a lot, I mean, they keep it very nice, um, in there, and I would, I think they're, they should be emulated by some of the other associations as well, um. So, just wanted to give them a shout out and thank them for including me. And then last night, uh, for the National Night Out at Morningside, um, enjoyed meeting all of the residents out there, and, um, they had lots of wonderful food, and one of the residents made this homemade apple dumpling that was amazing, so. Uh, it was, it was a fun night out, and thanks for B P D being out there and helping us, uh, stay in touch with all of them, so, that's it.
All right, thank you. Um, yeah, we just wanted to kind of echo on National Night Out, I know Ms. Barnaby and I were at Highland Lakes, which is obviously Ward Two, with you at your ward, and then we were also out east, I know Ms. Moore was going by later on out there at, on Twenty-seventh Street East, so just thank all of our officers, we had great presentation, and, you know, the, it's different timing of the way things go with the neighbors and all of that, but, but they did a great job, and our administration through the chief down was there. And, uh, I think it's good to let everyone see the positiveness that's out there, and that's important, so. Um, and then obviously, talking about the Karnes family, and, you know, you have relationships with people at times in their life, and then time goes by. Um, and, but with Brian, uh, obviously, he played with my son at PAL. Brandon was younger, but Brian, and then also, Brian was a four-year starter at the Manatee High School. Quarterback, which, you know, you think about a freshman coming in and playing the four years, um, and my son was the center, so there was a lot of close connection with that stuff, and they hung out a lot together, and, but, and I know Brian now has coached at a few different schools around Sarasota, Manatee County, and, uh, he's now at my alma mater, Bay Shore Coaching, is the last I heard, um, high school, so he's still giving back to the kids, as well as teaching at Lee Middle School. But, and like I said, in with Brandon, he never spoke, he was the quietest kid there was, but you could tell he had that character and, uh, that work ethic, obviously, being what he's done, and, and again, it's fun to have that for our community to say, hey, you know, we're going to be watching, we're going to be seeing what happens when the Olympics comes around, and hopefully, he's fortunate enough to make the team, as well as then bring some medals home for us, but no, that's, that's, that's what our community's about, and that's what we keep going, so. Um, just one person in the community, um, that passed away, we had his funeral yesterday, Terry Hassel, which wouldn't mean a lot to a lot of people, but to me, it meant a lot. Um, when I was eight years old and I walked in that boys' club, he was one of those fathers that was there that, that did a lot and volunteered. And for ten years, I drove around in his truck, he'd owned DeSoto Electric, in his truck delivering Christmas trees. And one of the things that, uh, that, you know, Bemis Smith was there, because Bemis in the, in the construction business, but said that when I got on the city council in twenty thirteen, they would always go to breakfast, and Mr. Hassel, I said, you know, I made that boy. But you think about it, that the people that are mentors in your life, that you may not, again, have lifetime times with them, but you think about those moments of what we can do, and I think that's some of the moments up here, we're making some of those moments to help our community. And you just look back, and as things go on, you know, we can have disagreements, we can have things at times, but we also know that we're working for the good of the whole, so. I just appreciate everybody up here, I appreciate our staff. I mean, and right now, the only people sitting in this audience is staff. So, you know, we appreciate you all doing what you do day to day, and really work hard for the citizens, which we're fortunate enough to serve, so. We appreciate that, and moving on, any department heads? Chief, come up.
Come on down.
Um, thank you all for coming out to National Night Out, those events are always very important. Speaking of events, I'm going to make sure that you guys are all copied on some of the Halloween events that we have coming up that we normally participate in. What's new this year is we have the Cops House, um, I have five young people in the police academy right now, it's shocking, and I'm sure that they all volunteered to come out that night and hand out cap candy at the Cops House, we're, we're very excited to, to hear about this. Um, one of the things I shared, um, at the National Night Out, because somebody asked a question about diversity, um, how many women were police officers, and I want to make sure you all knew this, last Thursday, Ashley Moody approached me at that event and was very excited to, to, she calls them he, she-ros, that's what she, she calls those she-ros, and said, you know, uh, the national average for women in policing is fourteen percent, she goes, and I wanted to tell you that we are at sixteen percent in the state. And I go, yeah, that's really great, but guess what? Guess where the Branton Police Department currently is right now? Um, I've been in this job for thirty-seven years. We are at twenty-one point four percent of our staff. I threw out a challenge to some of my colleagues to, to best me on that if they could in the state. I'm not sure that that's the case, um, and, you know, I think it's reflective of not only the efforts we're making towards recruitment with our pay, but I think it's reflected up here as well, um, for obvious reasons, and so I'm proud of that, I'm proud of everybody there, but I'm just proud of those numbers. Speaking of that, um, and this goes back to, you know, how we are becoming a, an attractive community and, and department in which to, to come to, we have a, um, P T test coming up this Friday, probably one of two. We have forty-five young people coming out to compete for roughly eight openings, um, just for the P T test, forty-five people at Manatee. I'm actually going to go in disguise, and we're going to see if anybody recognizes me, um, because it's always a pretty, we're, we're going to put Waller out there too, because I think Waller's going to beat them all. So, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a fun time, but I just wanted to share that with you, thank you all.
All right, one, before you go, Chief, I did want to mention something that, that, um, at the indulgence of the council here, I would like to ask our police department to come up with a plan for downtown, especially late at night, to give some options for the future, because we know that some of the after midnight things that might be happening that we all hear about, that we might need to be addressing that in the near future, so I don't know if, if there's good plans, bad plans, or, but some opportunity to make sure that, you know, we don't turn into some of those cities that people say we don't want to turn into, especially after midnight.
Certainly.
So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, going once.
Going once? We're not going once or twice, we're, be adjourned.
Now we have to have CRA.
Yes, we have box lunches, I think, but yeah.